When we're here or something, because we had been someplace.
No, get rid of that.
You're coming with me now.
I'm teasing, I'm totally teasing.
That's where I figured. Even though it's just like fun. But yeah.
Oh, I joke with Craig all the time, he says something to me, I don't remember what he said. Well, you know, like, try and do this, and I'm like, I'm not playing it, just go out with you. I'm gonna keep out all these weird things, like, no, you're, you're blue forever, you're fine.
And that's what. But that's what I keep doing too, is doing this. Because, well, statistically, statistically, women have been. Should be white. We'll see. The Lord keeps wearing me out. When the body feels like.
So I know the mayor said he might be.
There he is.
Yeah, so, um, I know a couple of years ago, he had gotten, uh, like a lens replacement. Which is what I mean, so. But I remember him telling me he had a pick, uh, between close, medium, and far. And you only get two. And so. Yeah, like, so you only get a pick two, like, you don't get, like, basically, you're gonna either be.
A lot of my questions tonight are.
Yes, you don't pick, like, do you want, like, medium and far, do you want medium and close?
And that's, that's what they did when they had the cataract surgery.
Yep.
And that's why. These are a little bit of everything, but the first classes are, were literally. Well, it's our responsibility. Because the others are more distant. I can get your stuff out there on that door.
Yep.
I can't read that.
Yeah.
I wouldn't have tried the true bifocals, and I hated them. I'm going back to the ones that you had created all the way. Because I still really don't have a really good idea. If I can't see anything.
I can't do bifocals, I can't do progressive, I've tried.
Oh, really?
Okay, in all fairness, I've been wearing glasses since I was four, so I think that part of the problem is, like, I'm just too used to having, like, everything. I've tried both, and they make me sick, like, it makes me, like, nauseous.
Oh, okay. Not a bad idea, really. I was a little bit older than you, I was in, I was in fifth and sixth grade, which made me eleven-ish when I started wearing glasses. But I did enjoy it, and like, even now, I know I'm gonna be worried about. I don't ride it when I go skiing, because I can see. Yeah, this first step. But, uh, then we go into the.
Well, I know, that's what, that's what, like, Craig was like, well, let's see, you saw prescriptions. And I was like, yeah, but the problem is, if I go in somewhere and have to take them off, I do.
Thanks for being the one to bail. I was gonna have to send that text, and I thought, nah.
I was like, no, I'm sort of my con.
Is that all national, like, that's state?
Yeah, it's a, it's an accelerator in Cheyenne, so there's five startups in it. They have Microsoft sponsoring. The culminating.
All right, we can start this forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. We welcome to the, uh, the budget delivery of fiscal year 22. You will have the opportunity to discuss over the next day or two, however you'd like to, and at whatever point in between, the allocation of just over $147 million in expenses throughout the next fiscal year. And as you all know, that is inclusive of the general fund in the, in the city's budget, all of the enterprises, and the variety of other funds that are in there, typically in the family of general fund accounts, that account for, uh, other business operations of the city as well. This is the opportunity that you have to, uh, to, to go through some of the larger themes, if you will, that the narrative covers, as well as any other questions that you might have in the, in the budget book itself, that the department heads and I have worked on, uh, I would say pretty meticulously, to, uh, to get everything to balance at the end of the day. And so, uh, you will all note that you have a hard copy budget narrative that I just handed you to you tonight. I would say this is the latest and greatest, has the best information in it. We did have some changes today that while a lot of the substantive themes in your message that you read over the weekend, didn't change, we do have some numbers in here that make more sense when you see what it is that we have presented for you tonight on the, on the presentation, okay? I, I wanna thank, uh, first of all, the department head team, uh, their team members that contributed numbers, and certainly the finance team and so on that put, helped, you know, put all this together. This was indeed a team effort, and I'm not sure that, that outside of the employees that you have in this room tonight, that they could point to employees in their organization that didn't have some fingerprint on the numbers that you have here tonight. Just to give you a brief review of how the process works, um, we put together a budget calendar that you all approved early on in the process. We start with that budget calendar as kind of our guiding document to get a lot of the critical conversations with you had, as well as deadlines for ourselves, so that numbers can be submitted and then evaluated, and then ultimately put into the, uh, the document that you have tonight. That really starts in January, for all intents and purposes of every year. And, uh, not only that, we had, meaning staff, 32 separate discussions with all of you that had some implication with respect to the design of the budget that you have in your hands. And so, not only was it a staff effort, but council was heavily engaged as well. I can't tell you whether or not 32 is typical and average, or if it's more than normal or what, but we do know that with the various discussions that you allowed us to have with you, we were able to take that feedback and input and build it into what you have in front of you as well. So, my hope is that when we're all done here, uh, this is representative of your vision and your guidance pertaining to, uh, this very important document, which, as I mentioned earlier, will help guide the expense of, of just over $147 million over the next 12 months. That doesn't mean that we won't have amendments and so on, that we need to bring back to you to consider and, and adjust numbers from time to time, because without a doubt, as we go through the next year, there are gonna be nuances in terms of expenses we didn't expect, revenues we didn't expect, and things that indeed will, uh, will need your correction in order to match with actuality and so on. So, uh, while it's, it's, I think, a really good body of work, it's by no means a perfected body of work, and we'll probably need you to participate, uh, you know, time and time again, I would guess, over the next budget year as well, in adjusting and correcting. You will find that, uh, at this stage of the budget preparation process, and certainly the presentation that, that we provide, undoubtedly, um, we, we're gonna be dedicating a lot of time to the general fund, and, and I'll tell you, the general fund represents not only the largest portion of services that are rendered throughout the city, but also the most volatile, the most unpredictable, and unplannable portion of the city's budget. And, and I, I think that's a huge travesty to cities and towns in Wyoming, to be even more candid. We're expected to provide a, a whole bed of services through this framework of accounting and planning that ironically is the most difficult to plan for and predict and everything else, and that's because a large part of what you do in the general fund is driven by sales tax dollars and, and other revenue streams that we have no control over, uh, meaning the city council, in terms of policy mandate and legislative guidance and so on, okay? So, in that regard, one of the things that we try to do with respect to the general fund is be really, really, um, careful. Okay, where do I point? It is not responding. Thank you. Should I point at you? I don't wanna give you a keratotomy by pointing at the eyes or something. Um, th- these are the, the general approaches that we try to take as it relates to putting the whole budget together, certainly the, uh, the, the general fund together. In our opinion, these are principles that, that I've seen you espouse and be concerned about, as well as principles that I'm concerned about on an annual basis. And, and that is with respect to sort of the middle portion of this, of this, uh, this slide. Without a doubt, you will see that outside some planned activity in the enterprises, where we're, we're drawing down some funded equity value and so on, and in some cases actually dipping into reserves, I'm here to tell you that, that reserves are whole. And as a matter of fact, in, in several instances, reserves will actually be improved, pertaining to the amount of dollars that'll be put into there, as well as the reserves that are created by policy fiat that you all supported over the last, I'd say, five or so months. And so, you know, I'm, I'm real happy with that particular outcome. I'll also hopefully demonstrate to you here, the next, uh, time we have together, that we, we did not take a position of trying to overstate revenues in order to try to balance the budget and get us to expense goals that we're looking for, and trying to gain your support for and so on. And, and one of the ones that we'll go into a lot of detail about is sales taxes this evening, because again, sales taxes is a huge bread and basket for one of our more volatile but, uh, challenging funds. I hope that you will see that we have a fairly moderated expense portfolio that we're proposing to you throughout this process, the process of which has to conclude in the second business meeting of June, where statutes require that that budget be adopted and passed by, by all of you. So hopefully between now and then, if you have concerns or issues with respect to what's being proposed, we can work through that by the time that, uh, that deadline comes upon us. I do not have a budget that proposes a growing subsidy program, and we'll go through that as well. As you have already seen, this budget does not adopt a capital agenda, except in, um, the case where we are proposing some use of ARPA funds with regard to, uh, you know, dollars we hope will be consistent with what their policy mandates are, where cash isn't already on hand and, and in the city's coffers, ready to be dedicated to a capital portfolio that you've had a, uh, opportunity to go through already. Which means that 1% is not being spent outside of the boundaries that you have committed to the public to stick to, um, by virtue of not only 1% resolution, but with regard to, uh, the other things that you have expressly indicated on the floor or by other directive to staff. So, we believe that if you like these kinds of principles, you should be comfortable with regard to the budget that we are presenting to you in start tonight. Just a, a heads up, yes, indeed, we do have public transit as incorporated in this budget, very consistent with the budget that was presented to you the other night. This would be a special revenue fund, given the unique detail and volume by which, uh, those federal dollars come into the city's coffers. That accounting mechanism is separate and apart from, like, the general fund or other enterprises where it wouldn't belong and so on. You will be seeing a request for positions as well, and we'll go through that in some detail tonight too, so you know exactly what is being requested and, and what, what we're asking you to support. That is a very broad overview with regard to the general principles and some of the newer specific nuances of this particular budget. The budget is balanced, we are living within our means, we're not asking you to dip into reserves. Again, you know, outside of those areas in the utilities where some of that activity is, has been blessed, if you will, by, by you. Now, we will dedicate some time to the refuse fund tonight, and more if we need to, because that fund is not correcting in itself, and, uh, we, we will need to have some specific measures dedicated to dealing with that fund later in the fiscal year, but we'll give you an introduction of that tonight, most of which will not be new to you, because you've heard some of that back in February, when we talked a little bit about that. Okay? Any questions before we dive into the meat of these things at all? You're welcome to ask questions at any time pursuant to the chair approval. To do that. And so, before we begin, uh, you know, diving much more deeply, I would like to direct your attention to this, this worksheet as we get into the discussion of the general fund. There are some numbers that I'd like you to circle, in that we will be giving certain emphasis to those numbers. First of all, as we're kinda working from the top down in the middle of the page, that $3.8 million dedicated to state supplemental, or other words, direct distribution, I'd like you to circle that. Or somehow indicate its importance to yourself. You have no pen? Hey, I got a pen. Prick your finger. We'll give you a pen, and you can even keep that. The next number that I'd like to dedicate your attention to, or ask for your attention, is that toward the bottom of that same column, $900, I'd like you to circle that. And then the next number is almost kind of like a footnote number, or in the postscript, if you will, the first italic, not italicized, asterized number, that 19.2 million at the bottom. Like I said, kind of a footnoted reference, circle that number too, 19.2 million. As we talk about the general fund tonight, those three numbers are gonna be pretty critical, okay? And I'll, and I'll break that all out this evening and ask for your specific help in that regard. If it's okay with, with you, Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna approach the screen here and I'll take this with me, even though it appears to be futile. Unless you wanna mess with it. Let's go ahead and switch into the next, uh, part of our discussion. Sales and use tax is a big part of analysis that we take at this time of year, thank you, so that we can understand what it is we are working with, again, in preparation for one of the more volatile, hardest-to-predict funds that we have to deal with, and that's the general fund. As you can see here, in 2020, which would be fiscal year 2020, this is what we experienced in, uh, the general fund, which really wasn't a bad year as far as sales and use taxes are concerned. With regard to 2021, which is the year we are wrapping up, and of course included, uh, parts of the pandemic period, we did see some volatility and activity that wasn't as aggressive, and, uh, albeit performed better than what we thought, particularly as it relates to where we budgeted for this particular fiscal year. You all probably recall, as you were, you know, many of you watching these discussions from afar, and since your time on the council and, and a lot of you carryover members, we purposely jacked this number down quite a ways, because we did not know what to expect this time last year, what a pandemic year would bring. And so, we put it to historic lows in terms of sales tax receipts, which had obviously very huge implications with regard to how we spend money throughout the next, you know, that fiscal year. The good news is, um, indeed, we, we came in better than expected, and as a matter of fact, for what we're proposing, we are proposing, um, basically a 5% growth with regard to what actually came in, in fiscal year 21, and what it is that we would like you to consider moving forward in 22. Now, with regard to how that translates and so on, because I know it sounds like, particularly when you look at the, the delta between here and here, what we budgeted last year and what we're budgeting now, be aware that sales taxes were projected to come in at some 20 or so percent below where we thought we would end up, uh, a year ago. And I say a year ago, it's actually two years ago. So we, we pushed it down quite a ways. The reality is, we really only came in somewhere in the neighborhood of 6% to 8% below that previous year of actual receipts. And so, without a doubt, this line could have safely been put somewhere in this area in order to, you know, more closely reflect what came to be the actuality of fiscal year 21. You'll note in, in the budget narrative that I presented to you over the weekend or passed along to you over the weekend, that there certainly are a few things that we need to keep our eye on. Without a doubt, activity in oil and the oil markets and whatnot is really critical for this county and this community. That is an energy industry that we rely very heavily upon. We're also really sensitive to what types of events can take place up at the event center over the next year, right? The good news is, we're starting to see those things come into play. As you'll recall, the absence of all those activities and, and that level of, uh, people coming into our community accounted for probably some 15 million in lost economic activity throughout the community. That seemed to be on track for being restored, if you will. I'm not as happy with regard to our employment numbers right now. Our unemployment rate is, is somewhere in the neighborhood of 7% to 9%. Certainly a lot less than the nauseating 13 or so percent that we experienced in this county at some point in, uh, last year. While we are improving, we're not where we need to be, and we're certainly lagging behind both the state and the, and the country right now, as it relates to that employment being replaced. So, without a doubt, placing this here is not a shoe-in, it's not a guarantee, but I do have reason to believe that this is pretty achievable. Particularly when you look at our history. Uh, this is history as of July 15, as you can see here. Uh, again, we're kinda comparing where we're at, uh, from a year ago till what we're proposing moving forward for the next year. And you can see how that compares relative to the last five or six years, if you will. If you look at this compared to a longer view, you will see that, uh, that really we're below average with regard to what we're proposing for the next fiscal year. And that does comport with the math. The, the math, whether you look at it from an accrual basis or in a cash basis, we are below average with regard to this amount of history. It is also below what it is that WAM and the state recommends, that the city of Casper could feel comfortable with. We're probably some, I don't know, $200,000 or $300,000 below what it is that was recommended through the, that workbook that the state and WAM produces for cities and towns to consider in their own projections. So, we're trying to play this figure conservative, and this is a critical figure for us. As you might imagine, when we're talking about, you know, uh, what do we have here? Almost $20 million in revenue for the general fund, that's a big, big piece of the pie. And we wanna try to get it right, but we're also trying to play it conservative. So, um, I don't believe that we're presenting you blue sky or, or information that, uh, that isn't achievable. Is there a road for that to not happen? Of course. But hopefully this is, uh, this is, um, within the realm of possibility, and I think it's, it's doable. A below-average collection stream. Now, this is obviously only one part of the, of the revenue puzzle for the general fund. Some of the other numbers that you'll notice in the narrative and probably throughout the budget in the general fund are not near as large, but certainly have some implication. We're, we're anticipating that gaming in the, in the county is going to improve. That number really didn't see a lot of loss over the last year, which was surprising to me, particularly given that a lot of those facilities were closed down for a portion of the, uh, the season, if you will. We're anticipating some, I don't know, a million bucks, I think, is what we put in there, and we're, we're at, uh, pretty close to that right now, and the fiscal year's not over. As far as building permits are concerned, you'll see an analysis in your narrative that indicates that, yeah, we are low right now, in terms of our projections compared to what we actually received and are receiving this current fiscal year. We're planning conservative with that number too, but even at that, as you'll note in the narrative, some of those projects that are coming online is with regard to stuff, uh, projects that we have received stuff for already. We are hearing on the street that, that more projects are due to us, but we haven't received those documents, and so therefore we're not planning on, okay? But that too is a big piece in general fund as well, building permits and that building activity. I hope that that continues in the, in the fashion that we've seen over the last year. Another number, however, that I want you to be kind of paying attention to is that $3.8 million, that is direct distribution dollars, the state supplemental dollars. We're anticipating those dollars while they are a little lower than what we got in years past. I don't see the legislature messing with those numbers for this fiscal year. For the state, for the city's budget, that's, that's almost a 10% piece of the pie, the revenue portfolio in the general fund. We're hopeful that, um, moving forward into the future, those numbers remain intact. However, I will tell you that that is one of our more significant vulnerabilities in the general fund. And so, I'd like to propose a plan by which we can wean those dollars out of the general fund, and along with that, our dependence upon those dollars to supply for operations in the general fund. I think that's our path forward, given what it is that the legislature has said about those dollars for the general fund, I think that's just simply what we have to work on in order to get away from that operational crutch that was never really meant to be there for, uh, city operations. And, uh, and so I'd like to have more discussion, if you will, later in the fiscal year in ways in which we can, we can do that.
Steve. Maybe we'll get to it later, but I am curious to know how we got in a position where, you know, we're using 10% of our general fund is coming from direct distribution, we're using it for operations. I'm just curious, how, how did we get there in the first place? If you could wrap it up, if you could do it in like a minute or two, if it's like a, you know, a 30-minute narrative. All right, you've taken too long now.
All I can say is that in years prior to my coming, that it was used as a stopgap measure in the face of pretty significant operational funding declines that probably occurred, um, I'm gonna say, in this time frame here. It was used to, to shore up what obviously appeared to be some declines in the general fund as it relates to specifically sales tax dollars they were anticipating. And, uh, without a doubt, uh, that would present a pretty big gap right now in funding for the operations of the general fund. in funding for the operations of the general fund. I will tell you, though, in terms of cities that I've worked in, this is the first time I've encountered those dollars being used to plug that hole in the dam, so to speak. I think we can get out of that dependence and reliance with an orchestrated plan that you all like and which obviously requires some diligence to follow and everything else. But it'll take some time. It'll take some time, without a doubt. I forgot to share with you, oh, it's going the wrong way, this information here. I'm not sure if you and I have gone over this slide with the new council or not, but this is one that we keep our eye on internally. This is produced by the state. The line that really is just puzzling for me and concerning is what they call the mining line. They really should be called the energy industry line or energy or whatever, because it includes mining. It includes drilling and exploration and so on. For Natcholet County, you know, I would assume that this trajectory should ultimately be up in this neighborhood more so than down here where it's at. If we were to extend the history of the scope of this slide, I think that's what you would see and certainly beyond that. To me, that represents the right sustainability for this county, if we could get there. But the thing that's been saving, a saving grace for the county is this line here, obviously. That is the retail sector, retail sector of this county. Retail has been consistent, even in the pandemic, which, as you can see, it did obviously take the wrong turn for our local economic conditions. I think as we move into the new fiscal year, that line will correct itself and come back more into trend with what we're used to in this county. But the gap between, you know, all that white space between what you see in mining and retail, I would like to see improved as kind of a thing looking forward to what hopefully FY '22 will correct itself towards, at least. Obviously, it won't be the panacea, but anyway. Breaking down the rest of the general fund, let's talk about the dollars and cents, if you will. We tried to create a little bit of a balance sheet for each of the funds that draw a lot of attention in your budget here. The general fund notwithstanding. As you can see here, we're anticipating the reserves to be needed at this level in order to be balanced with regard to the policy that you've approved, which would include 120 days of the city's operations that are funded through this fund. I will tell you that this is larger than last year's fund in this regard, a lot because the expenses were so curtailed as a feature of the fiscal year 21 budget. Nonetheless, keeping up with that policy mandate, these are the dollars that we would propose need to be set aside for that reserve policy to be met. We are anticipating a budget amendment coming forward that's going to draw down the beginning activity, if you will, for fiscal, the ending of fiscal year 21 and the beginning of fiscal year 22. Although, we are suggesting that your cash position in that fund will be a small margin of $1.2 million, which is good news. Not what I expected a year ago, I promise you. Because when we proposed, as you'll see here in a little bit, the fiscal year 21 budget, we actually thought that we would need $1.8 million of this portion of the general fund in order to balance the budget, which means that we were actually proposing that we'd have to rely upon the reserves to make the budget work a year ago. Fortunately, because of this activity here, well, the revenue, the sales tax activity, we've got a different end to that story, which means our reserves were protected. We didn't have to delve into them, thankfully, and we ended up with a cash balance. Looking at the revenues, this is what you see here. This is the presence of that, what I would call non-operating revenues that we use to accumulate in our total revenue portfolio for the general fund. When you compare that against the expenses, you know, this is what you're looking at in terms of the overall expenditures. One of the things that you will see in your budget and certainly discuss somewhat in your narrative and with your interest in doing so, we have the consultants who put together a salary survey two years ago to spend some time with you Wednesday night, if you so choose, to go over a lot of the major findings relating to that survey. Again, done some, at this point, almost two years ago. It was anticipated that this survey would be incorporated a year ago into the operations of the, you know, the general fund in this case and in some cases, in the enterprises. What we're suggesting is that while we couldn't do it last year because of financial concerns that we had at the time, we are suggesting be done this year so that indeed, we can do our best to keep up with market and improve those situations from an internal equity standpoint and so on. And like I said, Wednesday night, we can go up into all the detail you'd like as to what that looks like and why we're at that point. But that is the investment necessary to bring positions that are currently in place to market level and put us on the right footing moving forward pertaining to other raises and so forth, council would want to consider over time. In addition to that, however, we are also suggesting a menu of some positions as well. New positions, reclassified positions in order to bring up what you see here in terms of our total expenditures at this level here. I would tell you that we could likely debate the transaction and the placement of figures in between these two categories. The overall math is not going to change, but in terms of what it is that is considered a new position or, you know, a reclassified position or whatever, we've had a lot of conversation about that internally. And even as I sit here and look at those numbers right now, I would tell you that there's probably some room to move that math back and forth. Again, the overall math doesn't really change, but in terms of what it is that, you know, how we would class it and so forth, could. Let me give you an idea as to what it is that we're talking about here. Many of you may not be aware that as a result of the previous five years, we have shed a substantial amount of positions, largely in the general fund here, in order to make up for a lot of those balances that I just demonstrated, imbalances, I should say, that I just demonstrated on that previous sales tax chart where, you know, those direct distribution dollars were plugged in. I would say in that extended period, when you're talking about the two sort of financial cataclysms that we have dealt with in the last 10 years, we probably have had a shifting of some, I want to say 100 positions in the organization. Some have come back, some have stayed shed. What we're proposing is a restoration of some of those positions. We're also proposing some positions being brought back in order to deal with some of the more challenging issues that we're facing right now. Two of them that come to mind immediately in that regard are with respect to our vulnerabilities, concerns, whatever, however you want to put it, with respect to maintaining our cyber infrastructure. We are proposing a brand-new position that has never had a financial footprint in this organization of what we would call a cybersecurity analyst. This position would be used to strengthen our firewall, if you will, to be dedicated 100% to that effort in order to protect the city and its infrastructure from an IT standpoint as much as absolutely possible to avoid the concerns that a lot of cities and towns are dealing with when it comes to those ransom kinds of discussions. Without a doubt, efforts like that need to happen, not only in Casper, Wyoming, but throughout the country. Because cities and towns are becoming more and more aggressively targets for those kinds of concerns. And cities and towns are dealing with that question of, should we pay or not those ransoms? And I'm hopeful that with the right, you know, strategy on our part internally, we never have to deal with those kinds of questions. I don't know if that's possible or not, but we'd like to take steps in that direction. Another new position that we're proposing that again, has never really had a financial footprint in this organization is with regard to what the police are looking for in the form of a digital media specialist. Now that we're in the body cam business and we have been for nearly two years now, we are developing quite a library of video data that are being gathered in those body cam interactions. And more and more, as the cottage industry of suing police departments is growing throughout the country, that type of data is being demanded and without a doubt, requiring police departments the effort to go through and redact, you know, legally-protected information that could be gathered from that video information getting in the wrong hands. And so, that is becoming, you know, just significantly more demanding of the department's time. And with the right person in place, we can deal with that more effectively. The fire department is requesting a training captain, an individual who would oversee, as you'll see in your narrative, the training efforts of the department on a full-time, regular basis with the right authority and so forth in place that holds, you know, the employees accountable for that training that's being delivered. That is a position that, too, is requiring more and more attention as in, you know, because of the fact that fire is in the public safety business and there are times when those kinds of training regimens and so on are being brought into question. I think with that appropriate oversight and dedication, hopefully, those types of concerns can be mitigated. Those are a few of those examples. Another position that has never had a financial footprint in this organization is that of a communications specialist dedicated to utilities. For those of you that are familiar with the business plans that were put together maybe a year or more ago, that is a recommendation that those plans propose. We're suggesting that that be followed up on and be included. That does not have an impact on the general fund, as it were, but it certainly is one of those positions that is a new position, if you will, not one that would utilize the benefits of in the past. But I would hope you would think would be consistent not only with the needs that would be brought forward in that plan, but also with regard to the goals that you have indicated a passion for, if you will, as a part of your council goals makeup. Another position that I would mention, we are also proposing that an equipment operator at the bail field be adopted. Again, not necessarily something that is impacted by the general fund, but without a doubt, is a new position and would certainly be one that we hope you'll give serious consideration for. This is a position that is built into the rate model and did get some mention when we were going through the utility discussions back in February. So, it isn't necessarily a new concept to you, but without a doubt, certainly an implication of this budget that we would ask for you to remember and support as we move forward. There are a number of other positions that we also are putting together, if you will, based on the financial footprint that has been left by previous positions. One good example of that is the city engineer position being requested through Andrew's department. That is a position that we anticipate opening internally and with the filling of that position, not refill the position that would be vacated, if you will. So, to a large degree, that, you know, new position would be funded by the vacancy, if you will, of the position that would be left vacant internally. Another position that will feel new to a lot of you, but again, is funded with regard to the financial footprints of previous positions, is what I would call a chief of staff position. This, as discussed in your narrative, is a position that has some semblance from city managers' offices in the past. As many of you are probably aware, having dealt with the city in the past, the city has had an assistant city manager position since the early 80s. That position has gone unfilled since 2017, where the time was that the department heads that filled that position were relegated back to their departments and that position basically was left undelved with. With regard to the growing number of reports that are anticipated to be at the city manager's disposal, I am asking that this position be considered quite heavily so that my direct reports can reduce from 12 or 13 to eight, which would be direct department head reports. So, in other words, Elizabeth and Tim and Andrew and Tom and Keith and so on would be the reports that the city manager would be responsible for and the others would be ones that the chief of staff would take care of. That position is being funded in large part by what we used to have in the form of Jeremy Yates' position in our office that we did not fill and would hope that we could use to sort of upgrade, if you will, into a role that would have more direct meaning for that department and office as we move forward. We are asking for a few part-time positions, a large number of which would be accounted for in these numbers that you see here in the general fund. One more position that I forgot to mention that council asked specifically for, the court administrator position. We're calling it a clerk of court position. That position's actually being funded, if you will, by the analyst position that was vacated here in recent months that we are asking to upgrade into the supervisory roles that would effectively take the reins from Nicole here when she comes back to HR with, as a result of successful recruitment in that position. Another key one that council has asked about here in the past. Part-time positions. We're looking for some help as it relates to a part-time clerical position in court, as a matter of fact, which I would contend would also be something that would help the function of that office as it relates to some of the changes that we've seen in that organization. We're looking for a clerical part-time position in Metro, which again, would have some implication with respect to the numbers you see here, as well as for a part-time clerical position in the city manager's office also, which is a historic position that again, has gone unfilled at least within the last five years or four years or whatever. That is a pretty good feel for some of the positions that make up these numbers that you see here. We're hopeful that with the replacement of a lot of those positions, the addition of positions that are brand-spanking new to the organization, that we will be far better positioned to continue to provide services, particularly as it relates to some of the gaps we're experiencing now with regard to a lot of the positions that we have left unfilled and with regard to some of the current demands that we're having to deal with in terms of some of the timeliness issues that we're facing as it relates to service issues that we're facing today that we wouldn't have had to face 10 years ago or whatever, if you will. We can certainly talk in a lot more detail about those and others, if you'd like, although the rest of the ones that we have are much less of a financial footprint than what we have discussed just now. Moving forward, with regard to those cost implications that I've just discussed, there is a number, the other number, the third number, that I asked you to circle on your worksheet. That is the balance in the general fund that we're anticipating. When you look at all the operating revenues against the operating expenses, this is what the city has to play with in terms of what to do next. Hills we want to tackle. Objectives we want to try to reach. Basically, what happens with that number is, these two numbers are added together. Basically what happens with that number is these two numbers are added together and that represents kind of the fund equity, if you will, over and above what's required for reserve and reserves and other restricted amounts in the general fund. This would be inclusive, by the way, this math of what it is that the city pays towards advanced Casper, what it is that the city is proposing to pay towards the health department and some of those larger extra organization-type commitments that the city has had historically for a long time. Without a doubt, there's more discussion that can be had on those two obligations as well. But when I represented to you that it would be a hard way to find, at least in the operating dollars, ways to increase our dedication to the health department, this is why that math is kind of tough. Now, you're looking and you're saying, well, but there's this amount of money and there's this amount of money that by the end of the fiscal year, we could have to play with. And I do mean play with very generically, because you made decisions very deliberately, not flippantly. Here's what we would suggest, however, for you to consider. As we move forward into the fiscal year, there's a few issues that we think could be dealt with as it relates to these extra dollars, extra cash dollars in the general fund. Let me say one thing, though, before we move on from the operating discussions here that we tried to demonstrate on this worksheet. The general fund is particularly cautious in its design with regard to the mixing of operational dollars and one-time dollars that we expect only on an annual basis, if you will, with the exception, of course, with respect to this entry here, which I'd like to discuss a little further with you in just a few minutes. That is the exception with respect to the mixing of operations and one-time type revenues. Okay? Please.
Counselor.
Can you help put the $900 figure in perspective for me? What was it last year and the year before? Is it typical that it's relatively low or is that worrisome to you?
Last year, this figure was in parentheses at $1.8 million, which means we were lacking $1.8 million to balance this relationship. A couple of years ago, we had a balance as well, but it was pretty minimal. The very first budget ever presented to this council as your city manager, we had a very, very negligible balance, particularly since we were in a recovery position, which was a result of that economic activity of 15 and 16. My tenure here has not seen a lot of margin with regard to this entry in this worksheet. I certainly would say, you know, there have been times where it's greater than $900, but there's definitely been times where it's been significantly less. Great question. So the operating and non-operating revenues compared to expenses is really, really important for us in the general fund. We do our absolute best to never mix those as much as we possibly can. 1% has a specific role. We'll talk about that in a little bit as well, to give you a little bit of a heads up. Nonetheless, some of you remember this issue. Back in 17, I remember it well, we got a call from the state that said, hey, we believe you guys owe us $1.7 million in sales tax money that was given to you in error. And, you know, that made me gut sick when I heard it because that was the time that we were dealing with that recovery budget presentation. I mean, it was just right after that, my very first budget presentation to this council. And they said, yep, you got to come up with $1.7 million. We have been able to work that calculation, that figure down to 603 only because we, you know, tried to pay it off as much as we could because we did not have many options to get out of it despite our most, you know, aggressive attempts to argue against it and tell them they're wrong and crooked and everything else. I didn't actually call them crooked, but it sure felt that way. This is what we have left. We're proposing that we just get this off the books, get it paid and get them out of our hair and be done with that obligation and hope that it never happens again. That was the second time it happened to me, by the way, in my career in Wyoming. It happened once in Gillette and here it's awful. But hopefully this will be the last we have to deal with that particular situation. We also have one fund that will need $100,000 to balance its principal against the policy directive that you've given for this fund. We think that with some sales activity that we're going to experience, hopefully very soon, that we will only be about $100,000 short of completing that policy mandate regarding that fund. We do not think there are any other reserves in the family of general fund accounts that need a balancing entry put into that reserve, or I should say, any reserve outside of this one. The enterprises, of course, we'll go over here in a little bit as to its, you know, balance sheet activity that I'll demonstrate for you in a minute, but for the general fund, this is what we think might be the only one that needs some attention. And that'll basically bring us up to $1 million if that land sells like we think it should and that'll meet our policy directive.
Counselor.
On that sales tax overpayment, are we accruing interest penalties or anything like that on that amount and do we have any particular repayment terms that we've negotiated?
Excellent question, Mr. Mayor, if I may. We do. The state has been willing to allow us to pay this back over five years. You know, we're all, I guess we'd say we're halfway through that life, if you will, of that note, so to speak, and they have not assessed us interest on those outstanding balances. They did even give us a year off, if you will, repaying that, given our financial concerns that we were thinking we were going to face during the pandemic period. So this actually would probably be a lower figure had we spent the year drawing that number down as well. Any other questions before I continue? The next item that I would propose.
Counselor.
Okay, please. Yes, sir.
I guess the one thing that concerns me is our revenue stream coming in basically based on sales tax. Our red line up there was at about 1.28 million a month. We have averaged so far about 1.5 million a month and those two big spikes are from basically the payments from the feds, the 1,200 and 1,400. That's where those came from, the way they fall in there. And I guess I'm concerned that we're looking at, in essence, expecting 1.6 million for this coming year. And that concerns me a little bit, that we could very easily be about 1.2 million over budgeting what we're going to get on sales tax revenue.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, there are, you're absolutely correct. There are a number of ways that we could look at our revenue portfolio, particularly as it relates to sales tax. One piece of information that I would deliver to you, however, that I think might be helpful and hopefully you'll find that it'll be helpful in terms of feeling good about the projection that we've identified for you so far. Had we not built into this current budget fiscal year '21, a request for $1.8 million in reserve funding for this current fiscal year, you would have that to add to this bottom line figure right here. Had we known at all that that was not going to be our need and that we should only really have to, you know, drop that line by some 8% or so, you would have another, I'd say close to $2 million to add to this figure right here. And so while, you know, you could say that we are anticipating some moderate growth with respect to sales taxes, in my estimation, particularly as you look at the long-term history of that revenue stream for our community, I don't know that it's a huge stretch. Certainly, however, council can direct that those revenues be backed downward. That would absolutely have an impact on what happens to this number here. And then, of course, we got to dive into the operations in order to make up for whatever imbalance you propose would be a more appropriate imbalance to deal with.
Counselor.
Thank you. I don't know if this is the place for it, but since we're on the subject, we're coming out of a pandemic, which has been a terrible year for us. Next year doesn't look to be a whole lot better. We may get some sales tax revenue, but our energy industries are not looking good. And so we're going to be right back here next year, probably in a worse situation than we're in right now. And my concern is growing government, adding new positions, and I understand the need for cybersecurity, like you're talking about. We have an IT department. There's got to be somebody in there that's qualified to deal with this stuff. I'm totally opposed to adding $800,000 worth of new jobs. I mean, I ran on fiscal conservative-ness and adding new jobs that the city's never even had before and we've survived without them and now we're in a pandemic with an even worse projection next year and wanting to add new places, I can't get behind that. It's, it would be impossible for me to say, yeah, let's do that. I just want to be fair with you.
Hey, no problem.
And I think we're going to have to delve into this and I think we're going to have to make, our budget's $13 million. The proposed budget is $13 million more than it was last year. Coming out of a pandemic and looking forward into even worse, we've increased the budget $13 million. It's just, we've got to cut. We can't be adding, I think. So I guess I just want that ideology out there while we're going through these numbers and thinking about this. As a business owner, if you have less revenue coming in the door, you got to make cuts. You don't increase your budget. It's, I just don't understand. And I hate talking to you like this because I appreciate all the work you do and you're a smart guy and I get it, but this just seems really fiscally irresponsible to me to increase a budget $13 million in a time like this and with a projection ahead of us that we're looking at down the road. I think we're asking for big trouble.
Counselor.
So in the memo, didn't you say, Carter, that this is projected based on only the energy revenue generation that we have currently operating and not anticipating any growth in that area?
Mr. Mayor, absolutely. That's a fair way to put it.
So to me, that does seem relatively conservative. We're only banking on what we have operating now, which is well below what we have seen in years past and not anticipating any growth there makes me feel like we haven't overstated our capabilities in that area over the next 12 months.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember, I tell you, we have tried very hard not to overstate anything in terms of what we think the future holds. And so where Councilmember Nell says $13 million in budget growth, please know that's not the general fund, that a portion of which would be the general fund. That's certainly not sales taxes that we're anticipating that type of growth in. That would be the overall budget, the bottom line number across all funds. And so just to be clear, is what I think I hear you saying.
Yes, sir. That's right.
But without a doubt, if any of you share, all of you share, I should say, the majority of you share, the notion that we are being financially irresponsible somewhere, we really need to know where that's at because we're going to back it down, as many of you tell us to.
Vice Mayor.
Yeah, so I guess being a little bit, I have been on council for several years. It affords me the opportunity to have seen the long view of how things have been done. So I will agree that 100%, I don't think there's anything to be irresponsible. I think you're going down the path that you're supposed to. You've balanced the budget. You've got us where you need to be, you know, and the way that I've looked at it and I, because I've been a part of councils where people have said, we need to cut, we need to slash, we need to do this, we need to do that. And I think that it becomes this, our hair is on fire when, if you can tell me, Carter, we've been through major downturns before. You've been a part of other municipalities where you've seen major downturns and all those things. In comparison to that, are we anywhere near where we need to start looking and cutting, where we think we need to start cutting or doing any of those types of stuff? Because I am not getting that sense either from the memo or from your tone or from anybody else. And maybe I'm reiterating what Amber said, but my sense is that we're down at a very pragmatic, very thoughtful approach of how we are balancing our budget and how we're doing that. And so Sean, you've been on council with me a long time and I know where Sean stands on a lot of issues. And so my point is that I have not, I don't feel that way about this and I feel like we need to give you the opportunity to go the long view and give us the presentation of what this looks like and how we're going to do this and really digesting, because this is very complicated. This is more complicated than I'm, I think people that do a lot of, we're talking about $140 million of multiple things moving, moving parts. So I really try to sit back and say, how do we look at this pragmatically to say, are we doing this? But you can tell me, if we're sitting down that road, tell me right now and then I'll jump and say where Bruce is feeling or maybe Steve is feeling, how to, maybe you can, I'll put you on there.
Oh, sure. No, I appreciate the question, if I may, Mr. Mayor. Pragmatic is absolutely the goal we're shooting for. Reasonable is responsible. Those are all the goals we're trying to shoot for, without a doubt. But it's staff's view, right? And council has a different finger on a different pulse a lot of times and that's understandable, very understandable. I would feel very, very uncomfortable bringing you a financially irresponsible approach to dealing with the budget. I really would. I've never done that before. Without a doubt, the analysis that you have in front of you is the longest analysis I've ever conducted on a council's budget narrative because I want you to be sure that you know I'm not trying to take steps that I'm not comfortable with. But again, if there were ways that you wanted to sort of bring the general fund down, positions would be a way to do that and reduce our perspective, if you will, in terms of how that looks. Another way that I would suggest is with some of the other ideas that I would propose as well, although they deal more with the cash balance more so than the operations. We have a lot we can work with in terms of taking out some of those irresponsible approaches. Thank you, Carter.
You bet. Follow up from the Vice Mayor and then Counselor.
So the only thing I want to follow up with is this, is that the department heads come to Carter, they know what they need, their departments. They've been doing this for a long time and I really appreciate and respect their knowledge, their expertise when they come to say, Carter, this is what we can do it. Because I bet Carter goes to them and says, look, this is what you got and this is what we're going to be able to do. Come with me or come to me with what you have. And I know that happens because I've heard it for almost eight years. They come to him with very reasonable and I think responsible things and I think we have to understand that and listen to that as a council. I think we got to be very, very, very aware of that to listen and respect and understand where the department heads are coming from. Thank you.
Counselor.
Thank you. So Carter, you know me well enough. There's no disrespect intended whatsoever.
I appreciate it.
And we have to be able to have these kind of conversations without any disrespectful accusations being thrown. Nothing I said or will say is ever meant to be disrespectful in any way. My job and what I ran on is fiscal responsibility and we can still take care of our issues and bring our budget down. Our streets aren't getting enough. We're fighting over how much money to give public health. We're arguing over $100,000 and yet we're looking at $147 million. We've got to be better about, I think, and bringing a balanced budget is exactly what you brought us, but that doesn't mean that we can't find ways to bring that down.
Sure.
Correct.
Right.
I mean, it's, we've got to be responsible to the people that are paying the taxes here also. Just because the balance is budget, the budget's balanced at $147 million, which is $13 million more than last year, where do we go next year? There's, I'm just saying, there's other ways to look at it, not just one. So that's where I'm coming from. No disrespect intended whatsoever. No disrespect intended whatsoever.
Councilwoman Ingritzon.
So I, I just have a question about the salaries and things. Um, is it, to my knowledge, that salaries have been frozen for two or three years?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, if I may, um, salaries were frozen this past year, FY twenty-one, the current year we're in, and salaries were frozen for two years in seventeen and eighteen and restored in nineteen. Um, I'll double check on those timeframes to be totally sure, but that, that's what I recall.
I guess it's, to me, I would rather just have the salary somewhat restored and then look at the positions versus just keeping the salaries frozen and adding more positions. It's, I think that's kind of a slap in the face to those who, who have their salaries frozen and then they're adding more positions. And so I think we should just do something like that.
Sure.
Councilwoman Cadley.
I know Councilman Nell and Councilwoman Ingritzon have been talking about the expense side. I'm going to go back again to the revenue side coming in. And if those of you that were on council when I was back in sixteen and fifteen, you will remember that I said the oil and gas industry was going downhill, and we really didn't take that into account at that time. We're talking about the mining increasing with the current national and with a bunch of the stuff going on here, you aren't going to see a lot of drilling activity. We had, in fourteen, we had sixty-four rigs running in this state. The best we have seen since then was thirty-four back in nineteen. Last year, we went to zero. Currently, we have eight. I would feel that we would be extremely lucky if we get to the upper teens. I don't think we'll bring twenty, break twenty rigs this year. If anything, we will see the DUCs drilling uncompleted. But the DUCs will possibly, as the oil prices increase, you will see some of the frac fleets could, frac fleets, say that fast, bro. But I would see some of those coming back in, but that is still not going to bring a lot of revenue to Natrona County because most of those are happening in Converse County. So all of that revenue is going there. The only place we will see major revenue coming from would be in the out-of-town crews starting to stay now at the holiday ends and places, which would increase their occupancy rates, which would help our sales tax. But overall, I don't see a big increase from that flat line at the bottom, any oil and gas revenue, because really the only major oil and gas in Natrona County is what used to be the old Salt Creek Field. And outside of that, there's not a lot of drilling activity in Natrona County, which is where our sales tax revenue comes from. That's my big concern from being in the mining business. And, and no offense to, to your comments or anything either, but that's where my business is looking down the road at what kind of business activity we're going to have. And we have already had people start dropping plans that they were going to do this year on federal properties because of the cancellation of lease sales and being able to buy up their offset acreages. And so they're kind of on hold waiting to see what the Department of the Interior and the President's going to do with his moratorium on Masing.
Right.
Councilmember Paul.
Uh, to, to capture some of that in the question to you, Carter, does this revenue picture, what type of increase in mining revenue does this revenue picture assume?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, to, to the best of our ability, to absolute best of our ability, we, we are not building any exploration growth and so forth into our perspectives as it relates to, you know, the, the driving of sales tax dollars. We're assuming that curve will at least continue flat that we demonstrated, we showed you earlier. That's what we're hopeful for. It could certainly go down, and that would definitely have an impact on the sales tax numbers, without a doubt.
I'm just trying to figure, there's a follow-up. I'm just trying to figure out where we're going to get one point two million over what we've got this year in sales tax revenue. And that's all I'm trying to figure out.
Sure.
Because we don't have anything else. We're not going to have the two big spikes we had from the, from the federal payments to the people making under the hundred and fifty thousand, so.
Councilman Nell.
I, I want to be very clear about the point I was trying to make. The, the budget being balanced, the fact that the revenue is there to cover the expenses is not my issue. Um, it's, it's obvious that you've brought us a balanced budget. The money's there to cover what you've, correct. So that's not my issue. My issue is, we are in a pandemic year. We're just coming out of one. We're going to go into another year that's going to be really tough. And my opinion is, we need to bring the entire budget down. It, the whole thing needs to come down. It, we're going through two of the worst years we're going to see, and yet our budget's increasing thirteen million dollars. We're going the wrong way, in my opinion. And, and when you own a business and you have two shitty years, you figure out a way to cut your expenses, and that's kind of what I'm looking at. It, the budgets, Carter did his job. The department's heads, heads did their jobs. Um, the budget's balanced. There's enough revenue to cover what they're asking for. My point is, we should be decreasing the entire budget overall, not increasing it. And, and through this thirteen million dollar increase, don't forget, we're still shorting a ton of stuff. Public health, streets. I mean, there's so many gaps right now, and, you know, the police department needs this and IT needs that. It'd be wonderful if we were rocking and had all the money we used to have and could just throw it at everything, but that's not reality. And I, I can't help but look at this like a business, and I've had other council members say, this isn't a business. Yes, it is. You have expenses and you have revenue, and that is a business model, and you've got to have enough money to cover what you're doing. And you got, and you better be looking next year and the year after. And I think if we keep growing this budget in lean times, I think we are asking for a huge amount of trouble. It's just an opinion.
Yeah.
So, I'm done. Thank you.
Councilman Gammes.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I mean, I have questions about general fund-related stuff, but I guess I'm curious, how far in the presentation are we? Are there going to be other opportunities for us to discuss as a council what our priorities are for the general, you know? I got, unsurprisingly, I got lots of questions. I'm curious if this is the appropriate time or if we should, as Councilman Pacheco said, let you kind of give us the broad, long-term vision, get through the presentation, and then that's the opportunity where we get a little more detail. I'm just curious.
We're probably in the top third of the presentation.
With plenty of opportunity to discuss, um, uh, amendments we'd like to see to the general fund and budget.
Oh, absolutely. As far as I'm concerned.
Go ahead, Carter. Best move is this.
Um, I'd switch this back because Councilman Ingritzon wanted to see what that, what that looked like. I'm happy to move forward from here, however. Um, going back to the general fund, you're going to love the next proposal. I bet you. I am proposing doing something for employees as well, and it's going to cost five hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars if you decide to adopt it. Now, this would be less than, less than doing something on a, you know, employee-based, employee-wide, organization-wide scenario, um, unfreezing wages, et cetera. Okay? And so we can add that in here, without a doubt, but it'll change the dynamic of everything we've got going here. I, I assure you. Um, I'm suggesting that in the interim for this fiscal year until January one, we consider endowing our employees with a one-time payment of nine hundred dollars after taxes, um, which would be in addition to what it is that we proposed up here as it relates to helping employees, albeit not near the amount that a, a organization-wide raise would. Uh, to bring you to roughly, I'm going to say, with regard to what we proposed up here, we're close to nine hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And with the addition of this, that would be another investment, obviously, in employees of that amount. You can eliminate the nine hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in terms of new employees, in terms of implementing the grade study, in terms of upgrading positions and all that. And I'll tell you, the true blue growth of the organization with positions that have never been in the organization before is five. That's what I'm requesting. Five positions that have never been in this organization before, have never had a financial footprint placed upon the ledgers of this municipality. Um, that's why I thought the numbers were a little confusing in that regard. Nonetheless, I'm telling you, it's nine hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in improved positions and new positions, as well as implementing grade study, and potentially, depending on where you go with this, five hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. Now, were you to remove both of those scenarios and add those dollars and cents together, then you're going to be in the realm of giving employees a raise in terms of cost, which is hard not to like, right? But that gives you at least a perspective with regard to how it could, you know, impact the general fund. So that's the general fund, okay? This doesn't even do anything for part-time employees, by the way. And with that, if indeed you covered all these costs that we proposed so far, you would have nineteen thousand dollars of your cash balance left over to, uh, you know, to apply elsewhere, which may be needed to match what it is we do for employees in the transit fund, in that the federal dollars do require a match, and that just about comes to that, that total. Okay? That's the general fund. Let's move on from the general fund. We can save this conversation for a little later. I wanted to show you the, the impacts to the reserves and so forth with regard to all these other narratives and how that impacts the gap here between revenue expense. We can save that for later. One of the other major costs that we're dealing with, not only in the general fund, of course, but also throughout the organization, is the cost to provide health insurance. We're, we're kind of halfway between, if you will, the five-year commitment, closely, pretty close to halfway between our five-year commitment that we need to make with the state in order to sign on to the health benefit program offered through the state. When we came on to the plan, the idea was that we would drive these costs more in line with a nice, even, stable, um, expense curve like was demonstrated, you know, here back, right? Based on the long history of what we calculated pertaining to the actions and activities of the state's management of their, of their health plan. Look what happened, however. Right about here, the city was, uh, slapped with a twenty-five percent rate increase when we came on. I hope it's not because we came on, but the timing was incredibly curious. And so that obviously jacked us up to here. I would contend that moving forward, aside from, you know, those Herculean leaf lifts that a rate increase of that nature would require, our norm in participating in this will effectively find a new plateau and go forward this way. Which compared to being in a self-funded model, you allowed us to make a design change that gave us a forty percent savings in, in our expenses on an annual basis. Had we stuck with a rate plan, if you will, that was fairly consistent over time, while we would have an upward trajectory, we, we think that we would be at least in this kind of delta moving forward. However, we would not have had anything that would have protected us against the volatility, even at a new plateau downward that being self-funded often requires. Because we don't have a broad base of members to spread our costs across like we do in the state plan compared to being in our own plan. And that's the, that's the challenge that you have when you're your own group and you're your only group at that point. So the analysis of this proposal halfway through would be, I still think we're gaining in terms of protecting ourselves from the volatility that being self-funded often, you know, demands. But we are at a higher plateau than where we thought we'd be in terms of costs to participate in the plan with the state. And that's unfortunate.
Councilman Nell.
Is that the same situation we're in with workers' comp? Because I've noticed everything, in the different departments, some of them had a twenty-seven percent increase, some of them are up to a thousand. Is that due to claims? Is that due to increased rates through the state? Um, what's driving that one? Because it's, it's probably on about the same trajectory, I'm guessing.
I, I would bet you're right, Mr. Mayor, if I may. Um, workers' comp has, has really hit us hard over the last few years. And the problem that we have with workers' comp is, we, we are kind of chained to our history for a period of time because it's calculated on sort of an average basis. And so, I'm just using this, you know, time chart as an example. If we have, you know, a bad year here, unfortunately, we're going to have that history with us for the next two or three years.
And that's reflected in the rate, the rates as they go.
Exactly.
Gotcha.
Exactly. So it wouldn't surprise me at all, Councilman, if the workers' comp trajectory, albeit on a different scope, right, isn't a similar pattern. Because we have had some, some bad history here lately. But it is cyclical, just like health insurance. We have good history and we have bad history, and it tends to sort of cycle over time. Again, this is a big spend. You, you spend nine and a half million dollars on providing this benefit to your employees. I felt like it would be important for you to at least get a snapshot of how this looks and a bit of a status update, if you will. Moving into the enterprises, a lot of this is not going to be surprising to you because you just had enterprise discussions back in February. We are going to delve, however, a little more into refusals like I've visited with you earlier, but let's take a quick review if we could. Um, we start out in the sewer fund with a, with a available cash balance of one point two million dollars. Um, as you'll recall, with the, with the trajectory that we discussed with you earlier, that is not abnormal for what you saw back in February. What you hoped we could do with regard to buying down some of this fund equity is come more in line with an optimal operating condition that that green line is supposed to represent so that your rates don't have to be, you know, inflated to maintain this margin that may or may not have much meaning for the fund, okay? So as far as the activity that we're seeing at this point in the cycle of the rates consideration and so forth, we're doing what we thought would happen for the sewer fund, and that is demonstrated here in terms of, you know, buying down that fund equity. We're not, you know, messing around with reserve, which is the good news, of course. We are buying down some of that fund equity to where, you know, over time, we're getting closer and closer to those minimal sort of operating conditions, max, I should say, optimal operating conditions, uh, as demonstrated here in the chart. Okay, so nothing really that you don't expect to see so far. We'll go over this again in November to talk about the operating condition of these funds in a lot more detail than what we anticipated to tonight. As it relates to water, a real similar dynamic. We start out with, you know, a healthy cash reserve in water, uh, over and above reserves, as you can see here, to where we are buying down a lot of that fund equity value to do capital and so on, okay? Just like we thought we would, okay? So when we talk about budget being higher and so on, when you compare year to year, you have to account for activity like this because we are spending more from a capital standpoint, again, to bring down this equity value so that we can be more in line with the ideal operating condition, which hopefully represents itself in the need to do less rate increases. which hopefully represents itself in the need to do less rate increases. Hopefully. And that's why we go over this two or three times a year because we want you to keep a real close eye on these things. So that if you do come to the conclusion that you need to raise rates, you know why. And you have a lot of data that you can watch over time, okay? So in this circumstance, again, you're not seeing a whole lot that's new from what we've talked about. And we'll go over this again in November. Okay, so here's refus. Let's, let's, don't, don't look at that. Let's talk bail fill first. The bail fill was one that I did expect to see a lot of difficulty in. Because I really expected that throughout the pandemic period, we'd see less people coming across the scales, you know, less that they wanted to deal with in terms of wastes and everything else. And without a doubt, we did see a reduction in commercial pickups, if you will, in terms of dumpsters being filled frequently, you know, in a week and those kinds of things. That did happen. But what did not happen was folks coming across the scale still. They still showed up. And so this fund was able to be buoyed somewhat by those folks showing up. And if you participated in that during the pandemic period, you probably saw it yourself. There were lines going down Metro Road oftentimes. And in my opinion, that's how this fund did as well as it did. We also got some industrial activity with regard to the wind energy industry and so on that replaced a lot of the other energy industry shortfalls that we, we experienced in this fund. And so the good news is we will still have a very positive cash balance over and above reserves at the end of the day. Now, what most folks don't understand is the relationship that bail fill has with refus. And frankly, it took me a while to understand it as well because its accounting structure is complex and difficult for me. So in looking at refus, right, this, this is not the way we want to see an enterprise perform. It's not. Because what's happening here is this black line is sort of the firewall for our reserves. The red line here is when we're out of money, right? So my hope is this blue line always operates at least in a hovering condition around the green line. That obviously is not happening here. So what happens is, with respect to the bail fills activity, a lot of the folks that came across the scales in the pandemic period were folks that had passes and so on. And those passes are basically an unfunded liability, if you will, to some degree. You don't get a tipping fee every time someone shows up when they've got a pass. Now, historically, that's been a fairly manageable stream of people coming in. And that number has remained relatively flat in terms of what the refuse fund is billed for by the bail fill fund in order to pay for those passes that come through because those passes are billed by bail fill to refus, okay? When those numbers explode for a fund this small, that has a pretty negative impact with regard to that unexpected expense. And so when you're talking a $600,000 expense all of a sudden, that is going to push this down because that expense is not counterbalanced by revenue in order to keep this blue line afloat. Furthermore, when you've got steel going through the roof at 40%, in terms of, you know, that commodity, the cost of that commodity, the ability to purchase steel-based products like trucks and dumpsters and so on will also have a real negative impact on this behavioral curve. So we tried to push out all the capital that we can to future years. You are seeing, you know, obviously, a proposed activity that rates are just going to have to support in order to get this trajectory going that way and coming back into the promised land up here. That's what we need. And so, you know, we don't see a lot of those self-correcting behaviors coming through like we hoped, one of which would be a reduction in those passes that are unfunded, so to speak. And should that happen, then I, then, you know, I would think we could see this coming up. If, in fact, we saw commercial collections from the curb pick up, then maybe that would have some, you know, pressure on this curve as well. I'm concerned that it won't enough, anyway, in order to correct what we're seeing here. And so therefore, I think in November, we're going to have to talk pretty seriously about looking at a, at a, at a rate increase that would help give this fund the lift it needs and get that behavior eventually back into the promised land. This is probably the fund that I have the most worry about as it relates to its destiny because without a doubt, this is almost like the epicenter, if you will, of the perfect storm for our business enterprises as it relates to the pandemic period, being demonstrated the most right here. And so this is probably the fund that requires the most attention when it comes to November and any rate proposals that we might offer.
Councilman McGinn, Russ.
Thank you. I imagine the behavior that we saw here locally, people, you know, being shut inside, having nothing to do with their time but go visit the landfill was not unique. I'm curious, number one, did other municipalities experience this? And a follow-up question, is our funding for our refus and landfill similar to how other municipalities do it? Or the, you know, the way that we fund our landfill, is that unique in any sense?
Mr. Mayor, I'll take a crack at that. And if Cindy finds some glaring, awful, embarrassing gaps, hopefully she can save me in that regard. But don't let me leave any questions unanswered. There were several in there. First of all, yes, I do think that this was a fairly common situation that took place across the landfill industry in municipalities. I, I don't think this was unique to us. What I do think might be unique to us is the way in which we have the refuse fund and the bail fill fund working together as kind of an accounting exercise. The reason I like the way we do it, however, is because we have a number of other customers being a regional landfill, bail fill or whatever. Don't call it a dump. I always cringe when I hear that. Which brings a lot of income to the table. So we have customers like the Fremont County Solid Waste District or whatever. We have customers like Converse County and, and Rollins and so on. Wherein, without the, the presence of these two funds and them working together, we would not incur the support as appropriately with respect to the coincidental costs that come with regard to those folks being customers of ours as well. And so this fund is set up primarily to deal with the cost of curbside services and the equipment and so forth necessary to accommodate that. The bail fill, on the other hand, is designed for the purpose of dealing with folks who want to come to the bail fill. And they can be from all over the state. And, and those costs, those costs associated with that service, a portion of which is not born by citizens of Casper. And that's, that's the beauty right there. So that probably is less common, okay? Now, Cindy, do you need to jump in and throw me a life preserve?
You did a great job of it.
She'll see me afterwards. No, thank you, thank you. But I, I, I'm not sure I covered all your questions.
Yeah, I guess I'm still lost on what that relationship is between refus and baler and, you know, the advantage that I think you just laid out for me. I don't know if I picked it up. But, so you would advocate that that relationship, we maintain it? Or you're saying, I mean, it sounds like, okay?
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Mayor. I definitely would maintain that structure because it helps us to isolate our costs and pair those with the revenue specific to supporting those costs. Whereas if we try to combine those funds, we'd lose that integrity and therefore that transparency, which I think would do the rate payers a disservice. Because a lot of the costs that are born at the bail fill are not born by citizens of Casper. And we don't want that. We want extra customers. We want regional customers so we can spread those fixed costs and keep these costs as low as possible for our in-town participants, whether they're commercial or residential. Thank you, okay. Any other questions before I move on from this troubling, troubling graphic? Thank you. I will move on to, uh, moving on to other issues here. These are the enterprises. Again, not something you are unfamiliar with, not something you're going to visit the last time about tonight. We're going to come back to you in a fall, okay? This, however, is something that I really appreciate your questions about. These represent siphons on the general fund. And that is not necessarily a bad thing. I'm not trying to tell you that that's a very negative thing, but it is a costly thing. And you'll see why here in a minute. Incidentally, unless the math has changed, and Tim can correct me at another time in the future, the last time I looked at these numbers, the amount that was spent in total subsidy for all of these functions is roughly equivalent to the amount that we take in through direct distribution. Now, by no means should you take away from that that in order to deal with direct distribution, we need to get rid of these. But if you want to deal with budget issues and so forth, very serious conversation needs to be had with regard to how to manage these subsidies from this point forward. And you wisely have put together a council goal in that regard to give a real deep analysis with respect to how these look, how they behave, and what can be done in the future. That's welcome conversation. And I think you were wise to put that as a goal. Because here's the issue. If you assume that anything above this is the promised land, then you can see immediately that we have a lot of work to do. Even though all of these lines are not doing this, which is good except for Gulf, and that's, again, up here, we, we don't see subsidies increasing necessarily. They need to be here at the end of the day if we're going to run it like a business, right? Or at least trending toward what you said is our recapture goal, which I will demonstrate here in a second. The dotted lines represent what you have suggested, your councils before you, I should probably say, in terms of a reasonable recapture goal when this cannot be achieved by every single recreation enterprise in the organization. This means break even. Anything above here means profit. The dotted lines mean what you think is a reasonable recapture pertaining to each of the cost centers. And I'll, I'll separate this out for you a little bit because it gets a little busy. When you look at it for Casper, you, you are suggesting that at roughly 20% of a recapture, you would be satisfied that Fort Casper is kind of covering its own. Obviously, 20% is a lot different than 100%, right? Gulf, we want Gulf to be performing at 110%. And we do believe that it will. Once we've incorporated the changes fully that we've, you know, brought forward and Gulf has a chance to kind of operate with those new changes in, in place, you're going to be at 110%, I, I believe. So that's Fort Casper and Gulf. Again, just as a means of trying to separate and, and reduce the busyness on the charts. Looking at Ice Arena and Hogedon, I love the fact that we've got these two entities going this way. That's good news. But they are a long way from 100%. And so from a business enterprise standpoint, of which the recreation funds are, even though from an enterprise fund standpoint at, in a, in a government fund accounting system, that usually means that their fees are meant to recapture the cost of their business. We're not doing that. We're suggesting that at 65% for the Ice Arena, that that's a fairly appropriate means of recapture and that fees aren't generally anticipated to be here. For the, for Hogedon, they're performing actually right now above what it is that you've said in terms of a reasonable recapture goal. That's great news. That's incredibly weather-dependent, as you all know. I'm hopeful that the summer business will pick up in such a way that this trajectory will continue going this way. And you'll have the opportunity to evaluate the relationship with Spectra to see if there are ways to make that happen a little more aggressively this next fiscal year. Spectra's contract, basically, will need to open negotiations in your next fiscal year. That obviously has, has impacts on the event center, which we'll see here in a second. We're looking at rec center and aquatics here. Aquatics is performing where it needs to be. I will tell you, though, that's happening mostly because you have been willing to give some 1% money to this function in order to keep the cost of entry at an artificially low place, okay? Without that, 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 that gap, that delta would be more profound. Meaning you'd need more money from somewhere to make that up here. The rec center is probably the second-largest subsidy that you provide from the general fund to keep it afloat. It's below its recapture goal that you've set. And it's quite a distance from breaking even, as you can see. We're right at 40%. You want it at 50. You'd really like it, however, at 100%. And the rec center is a ways from that. That amounts to roughly a million bucks a year. Is that right? $900,000 a year? Again, if you wanted to look at budget containment scenarios, that might be one as well. Because that takes a lot of money.
Councilman, councilman now.
Please. Some of these are, are, they're skewed, I guess, for the general public looking at this. So like, for instance, the Casper event center is not fully funded, of course. We're funding it like crazy. However, it brings $20 million a year into our city. And those numbers aren't, they're not in there. You understand what I'm saying?
I do.
So, so that is different than, let's say, the, um, not the aquatic center, but the rec center, which I would personally love to see us dump because we're competing with private business and we're government. And that would save us a million dollars a year and we would, as a government, quit competing with private business in the city. So we compete directly with the YMCA and Lifetime Fitness and YO Fitness and whoever else. Why are we doing that as a government? I don't understand that. So I would love to see us dump it, save the million bucks. And, but on, on the same token, when you're talking about the event center that's bringing $20 million into our community every year, that's a whole different animal. And those aren't reflected in these numbers. So to me, they're, it's not apples to apples. It's, it's completely, I mean, wouldn't you agree with that analogy?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, respond a little bit. I, I didn't get to point out the trajectory for the event center. That is this green line. I must have eliminated the chart that puts it on its own graph. But just so you know, that is the line right there for the event center, okay? I would completely agree that it is an economic activity generator in the Toronto County, without a doubt. What is not often understood is that if the number is 20 million bucks, we do get those numbers in the form of sales tax dollars that support the sales tax figures that you saw earlier. So that is the only way that the city of Casper gets to calculate for that economic activity in the, in the community. And I would tell you, a lot of that activity is dedicated to spending the difference between this and this to keep it open, all right? So while this is a reflection of the subsidy necessary, it is a reflection also of the direct impact dollars that we get to support the event center. And it's also a reflection in the previous part of the presentation with regard to all the sales tax dollars that will ever come into the city of Casper if that $20 million figure is true. If it improves, our sales taxes are going to go up, but it doesn't go up dollar for dollar at 20 million. It's a, it's a small fraction of that activity. So I agree and disagree, if I may, Councilman, with all due respect. So I agree and disagree, if I may, Councilman, with all due respect. We do understand what it takes to support it from a cost standpoint, but we don't get it back in the form of sales tax activity directly to the city's coffers or in fees directly to the city's coffers.
Agreed, but we do get logic tax, and we get all the other things, if people come to town and stayed when they're going to the shows or participating in whatever they're doing, correct? So there's more than just sales taxes it's generating for us.
We do not get logic tax.
We don't get logic tax?
Nope.
That's all county money, or?
It all goes to tourists.
Visitors, or what it's called?
Yeah.
That's how they fund themselves.
Yeah, so the, the sales tax that we didn't get are part of that 14, that, that 19 million at the end of the day.
Councilwoman Engbretson.
For the Rec Center, are the swimming pools around town calculated into the Rec Center stuff?
The swimming pools around town are calculated into the Aquatics Cost Center, which is right here.
Okay.
And that is subsidized in part by one-cent funds, as well as what we're proposing in your budget, by perpetual care interest income as well. You will still have general fund money that needs to support that. Also, so you've got fees, you've got one-cent money, you've got perpetual care interest income dedicated on a proportionate basis, and you also have, uh, you know, the modicum of revenue that we get from the, from those who pay to come in, and, and about 12,000 bucks, I think, from the general fund to make up that difference.
Councilman Gamar.
Thank you, Mayor. Out of curiosity, these reasonable expectations of recapturing, uh, what are those based on? Are they arbitrary, or did council take a survey at the time, or is it? I know, uh, like, you know, uh, we hear from Fort Casper, they say the average, uh, recapture of a museum is, you know, whatever it was, 13 to 15%, so they would make the argument they're above that. Do those similar figures exist for some of these other facilities, or the, you know, what is that based on, is my question? Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Gamaroff, great, great question. Um, the, uh, the, the goals that were set were, were based on probably all the factors that you just mentioned. Industry standard, without a doubt, um, uh, citizen behavior in terms of, you know, them showing up, the fort's a good example, and furthermore, what the political tolerance would be for rates that would need to be set here in order for, in this case, the Rec Center to accommodate that type of recovery, okay? Which, at the time, was viewed as not very tolerant, obviously, because we only set it at about 50%, meaning we've still got a 10% gap in terms of what we're seeing from actual activity with their, with our citizens. So, could that be addressed again? Absolutely. I would say that when we do that analysis for you as a part of your council goals, um, resolution, that you're gonna see a lot of information with the light, you know, shone upon it in terms of where we think you can go with, with respect to trying to either get that up to here or erasing these kinds of seifens from the general fund. And, and maybe it does include, Councilman, the idea of, uh, not being in the business, maybe. We'll see.
Follow-up. Uh, those discussions, we'll see, you know, are, are we gonna have a discussion about these again, I take it?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
More than once, if, if, you know.
And the opportunity to explore, you know, questions I have about the Rec Center, um, agreed with the sentiment that I shouldn't compete with private business, but I know they do the community volleyball and, you know, the community activities that maybe aren't offered at other places. But if we're gonna have, if that's, you know, a conversation we'll have in the future, I'll, I'll save that, but.
I, I really hope so, Mr. Mayor, Councilman, that we do, because the other thing that I think we could do a better job of, particularly in this cost center, is separating out some of those other cost centers that are captured in this figure, including things like athletic fields, including things like sports programming, because I think you're gonna find that those types of enterprises
Bringing the revenue.
are gonna do a good job. That probably means, though, that this delta is gonna get wider, as far as the true blue operations of the Rec Center are concerned, when those other business enterprises are kinda pulled from
Yeah.
and separated, like peeling an onion, um, this overall representation. That's it? That is not it.
Well done, Carter.
Evan, what you doing to me?
Shut your mouth.
Oh, there we go. Thank you.
Is, oh, can I, is there something, like, with the Rec Center, for all the programs and different things that the Rec Center does that highlights what is more profitable and, and different programs and what's kind of losing money scenario? Is that something that's applicable?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, that's exactly the kind of analysis we need to put together for you, because I'm, I'm, I'm almost positive, you're gonna see a lot of, not a lot, but some other things that are captured in this overall net that are profitable and would make sense for the city to retain compared to other things that are captured in this net that probably won't make as much sense. Okay, and, and I'm just using this as one example of what we hope to bring forward to you with all of these things, right? It, it wasn't a part of the budget, that's for sure, but if you wanna see exactly what all of the, uh...
When we talk about it again, whenever you're...
Right. Yep, 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 exactly, yeah. A list of all the subsidies, however, are included in the narrative there, so you can see, kinda pulled from the budget document itself, what those subsidies look like, which will look a lot like what you see here on this first chart. There are dollar figures associated with those, uh, subsidies. Not a small amount of money, unfortunately. Okay, any other questions about subsidies at all? There's two more subsidies I wanna bring to your attention. Well, one more, because certainly you already talked about, we've already talked about the subsidy necessary for Aquatics. You also have a subsidy as it relates to the transit organization. Uh, I, I do not have a chart as it relates to what that looks like. You just saw that budget a couple weeks ago. I will remind you that councils before you said, "We believe in putting one-cent dollars toward the transit operation in order to keep, you know, the cost for entry into that service low." That still continues. We have not changed that. The budget that you have in front of you assumes 350,000 roughly?
Three eighty-two.
Three eighty-two, in terms of both a subsidy as well as a token purchase and capital support for the transit operation to, uh, to continue. That's not different than what you have done with the private operator. You know, relatively the same concept.
Didn't we, I'm sorry.
Councilman.
Didn't we increase it by a million, I believe, the transit budget?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, we increased it by a million not by virtue of the operational subsidy that you're bringing in, by virtue of the capital that, uh, that we're hoping to accomplish with the passage of this budget. We, I would tell you, your operational support footprint is really not changing. Capital, on the other hand, is, okay? So in terms of wrapping up a few of the points, I wanna make sure you understand. This, this is a myth that's out there. I wanted to be clear as to what this means for us, particularly as we head into fiscal year 22, because guess what? That is your information sharing year, in that in November of 22, the voters will be dealing whether or not this should continue. And I would tell you, we primarily internally use it for what you see here, streets, pipes, vehicles, of public safety and, and other rolling stock throughout the organization. Swimming and public transportation, we believe, is what the community has told us to do with these funds as well, but that's where it's relegated, as far as we're concerned. Now, you also provide funding for other agencies, and they use it for operational support, okay? There's a whole list of them, uh, and, and, you know, if you have questions about that, let me know, but, but that's the breakout in terms of how those dollars are used, not for supporting, you know, my salary and so on, okay? I wanna be real clear about that. We've heard this as well. This is not true. While we do have proposals as it relates to ARPA and CARES for, from a capital standpoint, the memo of which you should have in your little handout pile, if you will, as it relates to ARPA specifically, um, the only, the only place you're gonna see CARES funding being used is with regard to funding that $50,000 for the Event Center and the 40th anniversary, okay? Otherwise, the 11 and a half million dollars that we have for CARES, we are hoping, with your blessing, we can set aside to earn some interest income over the next year, and maybe even into future years, if you and/or your predecessors view that as important. The problem is, is that interest income is not hugely profitable. We're anticipating for that 11 and a half million to generate just under $200,000 in, in operating income from the general fund. With ARPA funds, it specifically lays out in the legislation that these funds cannot be used for that purpose. So you will not see a recommendation regarding these funds in that direction.
Councilman Nell.
Thank you, Mayor. While we're dispelling myths concerning the $50,000 of CARES money that went to the Waimi Ford Center, uh, the several emails I got saying, "How could you give them $50,000 to have a 40th anniversary party?", that's a myth. That money is to be used for an entire year to help promote, uh, the Event Center so that we can continue to have our shows there and bring the 20 million or so dollars that it's bringing into the community.
Hopefully more.
Right, but it fits right in with that myth, so I thought it'd be a great place to dispel it.
Thank you. The other thing I might add, Mr. Mayor, if I could, uh, Councilman Nell is, is correct, and it's also very, very consistent with the rules that were put forward in the original CARES legislation. So it's not outside of the legislation parameters, and it's not for just one party. Councilman Nell, 100% correct. Any other questions?
Councilman Gamar.
Thank you, Mayor. That 11-odd million dollars, um, that has to be spent by, like, 2024 or something, right? Here in the next several years, or is that different?
That is the ARPA money.
Okay.
That's the ARPA money. We're anticipating getting $9 million, half of which would come this fiscal year and half of which would come next fiscal year, and by 2024, we have to have all that spent on things that they prescribe in that legislation, the majority of which we don't totally understand right now. So, I'm hopeful that it leaves, the projects that you have on that little memo there are eligible. We certainly think they are, and we certainly believe that those are sort of the remaining COVID-related projects that we'd like to see completed. But until we totally know and we have that guidance set in stone, if you will, I, I'm reluctant to do anything with those dollars right now. Uh, we've already talked about this. I, I just said just exactly what you are seeing there. And by the way, kudos to Liz and her team and our new employees with that operation. Uh, they are the, uh, they are making it happen, and I really appreciate that. Good, good work over there. Good work. Working well. This is seems like an odd one, I know. I know. But we've gotten a lot of question about this in the last couple weeks, few weeks, so I wanted it to be abundantly clear. Absolutely not true. Uh, we don't dictate the school district spending or policymaking or, or how many teachers are gonna hire or fire or anything, nor do we do that for the county. And for some reason, there's a lot of blending of those, you know, authorities and vesting them all in the mayor, and, uh...
You're, you're busy.
It's, that's just not how it works, so we wanted to give that a little attention, a little attention. Uh, I do not believe that this is a myth. I would tell you that we are presenting a budget to you that is within reasonable means. Uh, we, we have nothing in here that says we're gonna need money outside of the operational revenue that we're anticipating. Our capital is built around a proposal that is based entirely cash on hand, unless, for example, those funds are told to us that, you know, we can't, we can't use ARPA funds for the projects that we've listed on that memo, or if grants don't come through. If grants don't come through, we won't do the project. Um, I wanted to be clear that it is our belief that we're proposing an expense portfolio that is within the revenue means being provided. We do have a couple things that I would tell you need to look forward to over the next year. One of these I've already mentioned, and that's with regard to Spectra. Believe it or not, you're gonna get the opportunity to negotiate that agreement. It's already that time. Um, we've talked about this quite a bit. We want to talk about this more with you, so that indeed, whatever amount of direct distribution is left for the city at the end of the day, whatever that might be, that it be relegated for capital and not for operations in the general fund. We wanna get away from that, and we're hopeful that you'll be pleased with the plan to make that happen. This is a conversation you're aware of, but will take more life as we get into the, to the summer and the interim committee assignments with this topic. We, we've talked about most of these. These are things that you're gonna get to discuss over the next fiscal year, and I just wanted to kinda give you that heads up. And so with that, Mr. Mayor, is the entirety of my presentation. If there are other questions that we can go through, if there's other homework you wanna discuss, um, Wednesday night is exactly for that purpose, and of course, we can have any number of work sessions between now and the second meeting in June to cover other information assignments that you'd like to present staff. So with that, um, I, I would yield the floor back to Mayor and entertain whatever conversation Council would like to have.
Councilman Cathy.
I know it was brought up by one of the members here about the direct distribution dollars and how they got into our operating general fund budget. I believe, weren't those initially brought forward as a replacement for the food sales tax that we lost? Therefore, when we lost the sales tax on groceries, the state said that they would reimburse that to us through the direct distribution dollars. Therefore, that was basically going right into the general fund in lieu of the sales tax we lost, and I think that's how that initially got in there. Is that...
Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilman. Um, you, you are totally correct about a part of that history. The history actually exceeds that, that legislative change.
Okay.
Um, I remember very well, in 1999, when the legislature talked about capping, um, the minerals and severance dollars that cities and towns would be eligible to receive pursuant to energy activity within their respective counties. The legislature of the day put a cap on what it is that cities and towns could expect to receive, regardless of how incredible the energy activity could have been in that particular county, the respective county. And so cities and towns are capped at 1999 levels and have never been able to allow that cap to grow or increase or change the share by which the state shares with the cities and towns. Direct distribution was primarily put into place to cover those shortfalls, because they recognized that the state came out as the, the lion's share winner in, in that, in that policy approach, and, uh, those dollars were put into place to begin with because of that dynamic.
So in essence, these direct distributions that we're getting right now aren't so much from the sales tax business as they are what are, have been called above-the-cap funds.
Mr. Mayor, that's what I would contend, Councilman, although they, they have tried to plug those grocery tax losses to that distribution as well, which doesn't make a whole lot of sense when you look at the way the Madden formula is designed right now. The Madden formula is meant to compensate little towns that have no sales tax activity, whether they've had any energy activity or... whether they've had any energy activity over the, you know, history of the state at all.
Yeah.
And so they've departed from, in my opinion, the motivation behind the direct distribution on two counts.
Okay. Councilman Nell.
So I have lots of questions. I was going through this budget, actually, all weekend and then more specifically today, and noticed, and Carter, I'm just going to put you on the hot seat right off the bat, it looks like your office in particular has the largest jump. It's over a 52% increase from last year. I mean, we're going from, you know, a little over half a million to over a million. It's a pretty small office. I'm just curious how we get a 52% jump because when I looked at everybody else, other than the, I think the chief had a 23% in investigations, but I think a lot of that has to do with supplies and things because, of course, I understand that everything's up through the roof when it comes to material and stuff, but your office has a huge jump, and I was just curious. Is that because you want to put this new, these two new positions in there? Is that included in that?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, that's primarily the reason, yeah.
I wondered, so...
Yeah.
I don't need any more explanation of that.
Well, I'd like to give some.
Oh, sure.
Yeah. The other side of it that you don't have the value of having right in front of you tonight is the fact that the history of that office has actually incurred some of the largest declines as well in terms of positions that they have decided not to fund leading up to this period in time. As I mentioned to you earlier, the assistant city manager position, for example, is a highly-paid position that has never been funded in the five years, four years that I've been here. However, it has been a regular feature of that cost center since, as I mentioned earlier, the early 80s. Furthermore, that office has had two full-time clerical positions. It has had an analyst position and so on that have not been funded for a lot of years as well. And so the side that you don't see is the decline in cost history now being made up in part with what we're requesting this fiscal year.
Well, I guess I have a lot, but the one that, I just hear from so many people about the streets, okay? And I saw we increased the budget by 5% for streets, but I'm curious to know this ideal seven million that we'd like to get to, what does it take to get there? I mean, I would like to see us, we've talked about, you know, maintaining the current capital that we have. I feel like we haven't given enough funding to any of those facilities to maintain them at the appropriate level. And so I guess at what point do we, you know, make some big transformative change, whatever that looks like, to get, just using an example, streets from the 3.8 to the seven? That's my question.
Sure.
I could ramble here for a few more minutes.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if I may, the other side of the question that Councilman Nell had that I didn't get to finish with either, that I forgot, was we are moving a couple of positions from the other parts of the organization into that cost center as well. And so that contributes to what would appear to be an incredibly high jump, when in reality what you're seeing is an offset decrease in other parts of the general fund to bring those costs into that cost center. So there's a variety of things I'd like you to remember as you evaluate that particular office. As it relates to streets, if I may, there certainly is a couple of things that we could do. Without a doubt, 1% funds a number of construction activities in the water and sewer funds. And those funds are different than the general fund, as you all know, because those rate structures and so forth are rate structures that you all get to define and put into place without the state telling you what to do and certainly without having to go to a vote of the people, so to speak, every time you want to consider something like that. So if you wanted to free up one cent dollars in order to dedicate the streets, that would be a way that you could consider. That would free up two and a half million?
Three million.
Three million between the two funds. And so immediately, that would get you very, very close to that $7 million figure. Now, I would suggest that eight million is probably really where you want to be if indeed you want to increase the proactiveness by which you're getting ahead of that repair trajectory. Because right now, even at seven million bucks, you're on...
Preventing from getting worse.
Thank you, thank you. That's exactly what I would say.
You're maintaining the status quo.
Maintaining the status quo. That's precisely it. The other thing that I could suggest, and I'm not necessarily proposing that in your budget, this is just ideas that you could consider. If indeed we were successful in weaning direct distribution dollars from the general fund, my hope would be that those dollars could be dedicated to helping that asset. That's easier said than done. I 100% get that. But that's exactly what those dollars were put into place to consider because streets are historically very, very challenging to find grants for, to find independent revenue sources for, and so on. Those dollars would make a nice match, in my opinion, in dealing with that capital need.
Follow-up to that. So, yeah, I guess I'm not savvy enough to understand the juggling between all the funds. I have a better understanding of them now than I did several weeks ago, but still very elementary. But I personally, you know, would love to see way more than 5%, like a, I don't know, as far as that kind of capital goes, I would like to see us get much, much closer to that. And, you know, listening to the presentation, I hear, you know, the positions that we're creating at the manager's office and all that stuff all sounds totally legitimate and good. I totally agree with the, you know, cyber specialist, especially considering the recent pipeline, you know, fiasco. And so those all sound totally reasonable and understandable to me, but I just don't know where we find, and I'd like to find, the money to be getting those roads. So, yeah, I guess if that's what it is, is we have some funds going into some, you know, some money going into certain funds, and we can kind of corral those together and maybe put them towards another purpose, I would like to see that specifically for streets. Thank you.
Councilman Nell.
Thank you, Mayor. And I think that's generally where I was coming from earlier, where our budget's increasing overall, but we're really short in a lot of areas. And, I mean, it's unfortunate, we just don't have the funds to throw at everything. And so, and I understand the plight that you're under and all your department heads are under in trying to bring this budget to us, but it just scares me with, if you listen to the public sentiment now, when it comes to six then, and if that goes on the ballot in November, if everything I've heard is true, that's not going to stand a chance. And do we need it? God, yes. I mean, Edgerton needs water and we need streets, and the people are so opposed right now to taxes. And so I see, and that's where my big fear comes from next year, is if we don't get that money, I mean, we're going to be in a ton of trouble trying to take care of everything, and we're already shorting so many other things. That's why I was hoping, I agree the balance, the budget is balanced, and I agree you brought us a fantastic package. My hope was to see us decrease that by about $15 million and come in under where we were the year before and try to move some money around and take care of the things we needed to do because it doesn't seem to matter if we've got an extra 13 or less 13, we're still shorting a whole lot of programs, you know? And in a time when we are just fighting to try to get every dollar and the state's whacking on us and everything else, I hope you understand where I'm coming from, Carter. I do.
Yep, you bet.
Councilman Luce.
Sorry, just to backtrack a little bit because I was trying to find the page. I think the thing we have to remember with this budget is there's like 87 little pieces. You can't just pick one tiny piece and analyze it by itself. So a perfect example, even though the city manager's office has like what appears to be a substantial increase, I don't really think it does because if you look at the city council budget, for example, it has a decrease of 50% total. And if you look at it, I'm going to go ahead and guess that's because there's a reallocation of salaries that were previously allocated to city council and are now probably being reallocated to where their, like, original cost center is, whether that's the city quota office or the city manager's office or wherever that may be. Because if you look at it, it looks like now it's our salaries where previously it was significantly more, meaning it was probably allocated from like certain people's portions of how their time is spent. And so you can't just look at one tiny piece because I think that there's a ton more that's flowing into each of these percentage changes.
Yeah, I think to carry on from Kristen said it's, I think that that would be the most productive way to discuss the budget for the next few days is to speak more in big picture, like, you know, what's the overall picture versus trying to line by line it and let the folks in the departments line by line it. I agree with Councilman Nell and Councilman McGamra. You'll never hear me advocate for deferred maintenance, and I feel like as I went around and toured all the departments, it seems like deferred maintenance has been a way of doing business for many, 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 many years, and that is what is putting us in a position now to say, oh, well, we need to be spending this much just to maintain. I think deferred maintenance is actually the opposite of being fiscally responsible. It might be conservative, but it's not responsible. And I think it's irresponsible to the folks who paid the money in the tax base at the time those facilities were built, that we're not maintaining them. And I think it's irresponsible to future citizens as well that we're not maintaining them. So I agree. I think we need to find, we need to find ways to get a lot closer and not just put, not just deal with things when they become a crisis in terms of maintenance, and I feel like that's sort of where we have been operating. So I guess that would be one of my, like, larger philosophical desires when I'm looking at this budget. The other one, I think, would be when we think about our subsidies, which is not a term I favor. I think that we should have some philosophical discussion there too about like what is the purpose of those facilities? That the purpose of those facilities is not to make money or break even necessarily. The purpose is to provide something for our community that we think is a benefit to the community, and it may come as a benefit that is not financial benefit. And so I think, really thinking about each one of those, and each one may have its own individual purpose that's, you know, we won't put them together, but they're not all, they don't all serve the same purpose for us. So, you know, some of them are tools when we're trying to convince people to move here and move their businesses here. Some of them are tools for giving our youth something to do so we don't see increases in crime rates. Some of them are tools to build community connections so we have a stronger community fabric. So they all have a different purpose that they serve. And, you know, while we talk about those, I feel like we need some data too about the bigger impacts of those and not just what is the line item of budget. So I don't know how we get that. Maybe it's through some robust community surveying or, you know, I'm sure there's somebody we could pay to do another study, which I don't want to do, but, you know, I'd like to find a different way. But, you know, I think that that should be part of the picture as well when we talk about those things. See, if I have any more notes, then I'll just get everything I have to say out of the way right now. And then, yeah. Oh, and then no less sort of like philosophical thing I have, it's a little more specific, but I don't think we should make the move to repay $603,000 to the state if we have two or three more years to get that done. I think we should save, I think we should pay something, but I think we should save some, if we don't have increased penalties, we're not getting charged interest, I think keeping some money on hand for potentially like more impactful opportunities for us makes more sense. That's what I would do if it was my money, and it wasn't going to cost me any more money to keep the money on hand. I'd pay, you know, a third of it if we've got three more years or something like that, and then keep some money so that, you know, there may be a better opportunity for us for that money that comes down the road.
Councilwoman Ingridson.
I do agree with Amber on that $600,000 because, I mean, like, free interest.
So take it when you get it, right?
But, and I had mentioned to Carter earlier, I think also that it might be reasonable to look at the city assets and possibly look at seeing what the city has and then maybe looking at selling a city asset or two to try to help offset this budget, just to kind of bring in some extra money towards that, something that maybe we're just sitting on that we have no real plans for. Whether it's vacant land, I know that we've got the wind building and things that we talked about a little bit, but...
Councilman McGamra.
Thank you. I would concur with those council members on the 600K. That's how I'm treating my student loan right now. As long as they keep deferred interest, I am not going to pay it, so.
Right.
I guess I had a question on water. I saw water increasing in cost in a lot of different areas, and so I guess I was just looking for some more information on that. And I guess I know I have brought this up before, as far as us having like double the amount of parks per capita and stuff, but I'm just curious if there's opportunity, you know, 30% increase in water for the cemetery, 150% in special areas, 216% in athletic maintenance. Are there opportunities to save money by watering less, I guess, is a question I have because we do a lot of watering in a lot of areas and...
In the desert.
We live in a desert. And so I just, I think that's irresponsible. I water my lawn, you know, not as frequently as a lot of people just because it takes so much to keep the grass green around here, and so are there opportunities for us to zero-scape or do something else where we're not spending so much money on water, is a question I have.
Hang on a second. Carter, I'm going to head to your list too. Kind of going back to deferred maintenance or waiting till things come to a head. I know we're looking into a police department, but we have talked about that for years and years and years, and it has never come to, you know, it's never come about. It's like the can keeps getting kicked down the road. And I get it, it's a big bill. But one thing I would like to know is what do they need now? Because if it doesn't come around that we can get a new PD, they are spread out all over the place. They are busting at the seams, and that has needed to be addressed for years. And so if there's a stopgap measure that would help them out, I would like to know what that is and if there's any funding to take care of that. I just feel like we have failed in that area for a long time, and that's something that we need to take a look at.
Councilman Nell.
I have something different, but to piggyback on what you said, I think the public needs to understand also, we're spending $400,000 a year just in lease and rent payments to have our police department scattered all over the place. You can get a pretty nice building for $400,000 a year. So it's not like we're just wanting to spend money. There's actually money being bled out right now that'll cover primarily the cost of taking care of the police department, just so the public knows that and doesn't think we're just, oh, my God, he's spending money. So I wanted that out there. One of the things, since I saw you taking notes, and I mentioned this earlier, but I've actually discussed this with you before and a couple other council members, and I'm vehemently opposed to government, not participating, but competing with private business. And that center that we have, you know, the school districts have gymnasiums that, we have rec volleyball, we have rec basketball. We are literally competing with YMCA with that building, aside from the ice arena. It's nothing but a gymnasium and a swimming pool and the same thing that the Y has, and the Y's building a brand-new pool right now, and the school's building a brand-new pool. And we have, how many gyms in this town? And the WAC just went out of business. They have two of them, and one of them's been bought up by YO307, YO Fitness now, I guess, or whatever. But that building costs us $1 million a year in subsidies, and we're literally competing with private business, and I don't ever see that changing. And I think we should seriously look into selling that entity. Like Amber said earlier, which I totally agree with, subsidies have, they have their place, whether it's through community involvement or programs that we do, but that's the one that we do have that doesn't do that for us. And I think we could whip off a million bucks a year right there, plus whatever we get for the building and everything else. But anyway, I just, I really thought, because I know we've talked about it, and, you know, we're here to do for our community, but we're kind of hurting our community with that particular building because of what we're doing to the private business in that sector, so.
I would just add to that, that you take that building, where you take away all the program and it goes with it for the entire community, no matter what the sport is. So in relying on the private sector to pick that up, I think is a tall order. Councilwoman Luce.
Just because I actually don't disagree with you, but I think we want to be really careful with this narrative because we're getting really crosswired. So we're saying that we want the city to operate like a business, which anyone at the... the basic level would argue that a business's purpose is to make profit and compete with other businesses in order to make that profit. So then, but then we're literally turning right around and saying, well, we can't be competing with businesses. Okay, y- you can't have both. It's either we're here to provide services, or you want it to run like a business, and a business's job is to compete with other businesses and make profit. So, I don't disagree that we should look at selling the rec center, but I think we need to be careful because we're starting to basically not make sense in the narrative.
Councilmember Paul.
Yeah, add a little nuance there too. I, I also, I also agree that we shouldn't be competing with private business. I think, I think though, the thing, I, I think there's, there also is a narrative going around that, you know, a lot of government functions should be pushed into the private sector, would be better served in the private sector. The thing that that doesn't necessarily take into account is that private sector has to build in profit margin, which can put it out of reach for community members. So, if in fact the rec center is serving community members that are not being served otherwise in terms of their pricing model or something like that, um, you know, I'm not sure that it's competing, and I, I think that that, you know, the type of analysis is worth, is worth doing because I, I agree, we should not be competing with the private sector, but part of the point of these amenities is that they're accessible to everyone. So when we, you know, when we're trying to recover all these subsidies through user fees and that sort of thing, it starts to sort of move out of the, the realm of purpose of those, which is that they are accessible, and that it's not, you're not bound by, you know, a particular financial situation to be able to enjoy these things, and, and so, and the way, the way we can do that is that we don't have to generate a profit. We don't have to show at the end of the year that our, you know, our budget can be, we made nine hundred dollars at the end of this year, and that's, that's A okay for a government. If that was a business, you'd be like, ooh, uh-huh, oh. So, I think that, I think that, you know, there are, there are some similarities, but there are also some differences in, in function, and I agree, we gotta be careful that we're not, not competing with private business, but I also think, like, we need to, we need to, that comparison doesn't always work, and it may work in this case, I'm not saying that it doesn't.
Councilwoman Cathy.
Right now, and actually this could have been called as a point of order, but we need to get back to looking at this budget for right now. We're not going to wind up selling the event center, the rec center between now and the first of July, actually the twenty-second of June, so I think we need to defer a lot of the discussion that is going on right now to after this is through, and we bring this back up September, October, November, as we redevelop new policies on our subsidies and things like that. So, that was my comment, is that we need to get back to looking at this budget, and we can discuss a big portion of what we're talking about for the FY twenty-three budget.
Vice Mayor Pacheco. Thank you. Yeah, what I would say is now, and I think Steve is on the right track, looking at the budget and to sit and say, okay, so now this is where we're at, we've spent almost three hours, you know, sitting and digesting, having the presentation, having this conversation, hopefully everybody has done their homework, written memo, has looked over somewhat of the budget, um, to take a look at it. What we're gonna do, and what I've seen other councils get, get in, in the weeds with, is going line by line, and when we go line by line, there's just no way you're gonna do it, we'll be here for another six months trying to figure that out, because everybody would be saying, oh, I want this, I want that. I think Amber is absolutely right, we have to look at the big picture about this. What I will say is, is that on the, on the outside view, without going in more depth right now, it's a well-done budget as always. It's thoughtful, it's pragmatic, and it's a good approach, and it's responsible. And I've, I've seen a lot of them, I'm not going to pull Sean into this, so I'll let him talk if he wants to for himself. Seen a lot of them, this is very well-done. Carter and his team always do a fantastic job balancing it and making it right, and making it what it needs to be. And our questions are right, we should be asking all these questions and, and asking tough questions, but what I'm gonna tell you is, is that these guys know how to do it, and they're professionals, and, um, we're a government, and we do have to spend money. It's just, it is what it is. If you're gonna sit in your honor and try to cut fifteen million dollars, you're gonna, I, I, I wanna see where we're gonna cut fifteen million dollars. That, literally, we, we would be a shell, and anybody would not have the amenities that we have, and that's one of the reasons why people come to cash group, because of the amenities that we have. So, again, the staff has done a wonderful job putting this together, and the department heads have done a good job, so.
Well, Mr. Mayor, um, there, there are some lingering questions, um, and certainly with regard to the roundtable that we just had, I, I, I do have other questions, uh, as well. And, and, and what that means is, we, we've gotta coalesce around some direction that allows us to present a budget that can be passed, uh, in thirty days. Um, so, here are the questions that I think I'm hearing, as it relates to trying to get this budget prepared and reflective of, of, of a majority in the room. First of all, um, and I, I'm not saying first of all as in priority-wise, but top of my list, non-prioritized, um, watering parks less, without a doubt.
That doesn't have to be the next thirty days, by the way.
Oh, it could.
If it's ten million dollars, then yeah, I would really like to.
It won't be that, it won't be that.
But it's just something, one of those things that, you know, is kind of out of the box, a lot of people don't think about, I think, could be, you know, I know that's a push in, in climates and stuff like ours, is to get to a more native, natural state of things so that you're not spending exorbitant amounts of money and water to maintain.
Kentucky bluegrass.
Yeah, Kentucky bluegrass. So.
And, and so, my, my question to the council would be, like we did during the pandemic period, we can water less, and, and it did provide savings to what we pay to the water fund, meaning the general fund pays to the water fund. And so, uh, we did not anticipate backing down the turf quality with regard to watering in the budget you have in front of you, and so if that's a directive, we will need to know that soon, uh, 'cause that, that does help provide operational savings to the general fund. Looks like you have, I don't know, I've.
I wanna hear what you have to say, but, uh, sometimes they go in and they go out. Um, I'd be curious to know if we heard anything from residents, I didn't know we were watering less this last year, and I'd be curious to know if we heard from residents, and if not, um, you know, seems like an easy decision in my mind, but, uh.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, the short answer is yes, we did.
Oh, all right. Unsurprising.
It's hard to alter a service without hearing from someone.
All right, very much.
I, I think it's important before we give direction to know, what are we talking about savings? Are we looking at ten thousand bucks? Are we looking at a million dollars? Is it, is it fifty bucks? You know, it, it would really be nice to know how much money we're talking about before we worry about giving you a directive on it, I would think.
I think that was part of the homework, yeah?
Yep, yep.
Was to see how much was.
Absolutely, and, and we could absolutely do that. In fact, uh, the savings that we incurred last year may be a good starting point, in terms of that, as far as how that goes. Uh, the, the concept of not paying the state back in total, uh, we can talk further about that too, it's on my list. Um, it was a sales tax overpayment, and so we have historically been paying with sales tax dollars. If you do that moving forward, the, the, the general fund worksheet obviously goes further into imbalance, or we look at other one-time dollars to pay that. So, I would, I would give you that bug to consider, we will have some information on Wednesday night. Uh, the, the biggest question, in my opinion, is what do you want to do for employees? I heard of a number of, I, I heard a number of ideas, uh, as we went through that portion of the discussion, uh, we need to conclude what that looks like. They represent fifty-two percent of our operations, and so indeed, if we do want to reduce a budget by fifteen million, you're gonna go right to the heart of jobs. Um, if you do want to give people a raise, that math is gonna go up really, really quick. Um, I need you to be thinking about that, because of all the items I've got on this list tonight, that'll be probably the biggest one, given its proportionate share of operational expenses and whatnot.
Councilmember Paul.
Um, maybe this is part of the homework, or maybe you can answer it now, I got a little bit lost in the details of that, because I feel like there are like three different things. There was like the opportunity to give a one-time bonus.
Yep.
The opportunity to stop with the pay freezes, or that would be One Direction, right? This, the grave study.
Right.
Which would be sort of calibrate the whole thing. So I'm, I'm a little bit confused about how those things interplay with one another, which ones are represented in the current budget that we're looking at, which ones are not in there at this time, and s- yeah, I'm just, so I, I feel ill-equipped to give directive on employees, because I don't understand all the details of those yet.
Mr. Mayor, we will put that homework together, and, uh, and you'll see the math, absolutely.
Great.
Yep.
Councilwoman Nell.
Thank you. I'd also, Carter'd like to know if, um, do we have someone qualified in our IT department currently that can deal with ransomware? Do we necessarily have to go out and, and have somebody replace him? And are the other departments, are they on pay freezes right now, or is this across the board for everybody? The reason I'm asking is you, you touched on it earlier, we're in a seven percent unemployment slump right now in this county, we have a lot of people out of work, and so, um, to me, I don't, I don't wanna, I don't wanna alienate myself with our employees.
Sure.
But I mean, at least they're working right now, you know, and their wages are pretty competitive. I, you know, it's just a thought, so I, I guess I'm just curious, do we have people with the technology currently, um, to fulfill some of the places you're looking at? I'm just asking, it's not, I'm not trying to micromanage anything, it's, it's, I just really worry about the message we're sending to our constituents of pay taxes that they're out of work, and the job prospects don't look real good in the future, as you've seen with the mining and everything else. So, um, it's worrisome to me that we're spending money to give, you know, a nine hundred dollar bonus to an employee, and this guy over here is struggling to find a way to feed his family because he can't even find a damn job, so, uh, just a thought.
Mr. Mayor, just to, to, to make sure you understand real clearly, um, where we're coming from in terms of what the budget proposes, as you have it in front of you right now, okay? We are proposing, by virtue of the numbers, implementing the grave study, we are proposing upgrading positions, obviously a certain basket of them, we are proposing hiring some positions, uh, we're proposing improving the retirement contributions for the police department, which you will find is a part of the grave study. Um, and, and that is reflected in the numbers you have immediately in front of you, okay? There also are increases in cost for the health insurance benefit that you're incurring as well, and, you know, to, to talk about the full employee package, you can't ignore benefit costs either, right? So that's in there too. What's not in there, although we are proposing, okay, is the idea that, um, a one-time payment be given on July one for full-time employees, not accounted for in the budget, but a way that you could spend the remaining residual cash if you chose to, okay? But not accounted for in the numbers you have in front of you. It will not be an operational impact, because I'm talking about funding it with one-time dollars. Um, what you also don't have in the budget is the fact that pending the right economic conditions locally, I would likely be bringing back, um, a pay increase for employees on January one, effective January one, okay? Not in your budget, not in your budget, but certainly consistent with what I would propose should happen for our current, for our current employees, for two reasons. First of all, merit increases have taken a hiatus, as we all have talked about already, and secondly, COLAs have not happened except once in the last five years.
Yep.
COLAs, and that's the cost of living in allowances that you probably also make with. Have not occurred except one time in the last five years, okay?
Would that be one-time money, or would that be operational money?
That would definitely be, Mr. Mayor, operational money, without a doubt. Either a merit or a COLA, that would be an ongoing operational cost you'd have to incur every year, yeah. Compared to a one-time payment, where it's just a one-time, one-time impact that doesn't raise people's wages, if you will, although it puts money in their pockets.
Which is what you're advocating for.
As of July one, correct, yeah, and is in your, uh, uh, in your presentation, but not accounted for in your budget.
Okay. Councilwoman Ingrid.
So, so you kind of lost me on this thousand dollars, this is, I, I can't get my brain wrapped around, why are you beginning everybody a thousand dollars? I mean, just because, I mean, we're talking about raising, putting their salaries back and giving all of that, and so is it just because, can you explain that?
Absolutely. Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman, all of these are fair questions, mind you, I, I, I really understand where you're coming from, and, and, and do not, uh, feel like I would, uh, not appreciate this opportunity to dialogue about these things. Um, the, the challenge that we have had over the last five years, at the very, very least, is consistently, um, advancing our employees' earnability, if you will. Um, at the very beginning of the last, of, of the last five years, we had a, a significant, you know, revenue cataclysm to where we, we didn't give raises at that point in time, we froze, froze people's wages and, and so on. Um, we're going through that scenario again as of the pandemic period, where we're not giving raises, we're not giving COLAs, and so on. The only reason I'm suggesting a one-time payment that is not accounted for in your budget, I'm trying not to be emphatic, um, is that it is a way to put money in folks' pocket without incurring a long-term liability year in, year out, year in, year out. Unlike raises, even if it's a merit, or if it's a one percent COLA, you have that cost to incur year in, year out with those limited general fund dollars. So, the advantage that we gain is really up to your preference, honestly, with respect to whatever road we take, because if you pay on a one-time basis through a, a, you know, one-time payment, that impact is dealt with once, you don't have to deal with it year in, year out. On the other hand, if you give a raise, whether it be a merit or a COLA, we'll just call it one percent, whatever it is, you have that cost to incur, that increased expenditure every single year with operational dollars. We don't use capital dollars to cover those costs, we don't use one-time money to cover those costs. Those are monies that come in competition with the subsidies that we pay to the rec center, in competition with what we pay to the event center, in competition with what we use to water parks, um, which it won't be a million dollar savings, by the way, just won't, unfortunately. Um, so that's why I try to distinguish between the two options available to you.
Maybe there are raises or no.
Or nothing.
Or not.
Yeah, the bonuses for now, the one percent raise, is you've just increased the capital budget by one percent forever.
The other challenge that we face with respect, if I may, Mr. Mayor Protem.
Yes.
Is how much you want to see the mingling of dollars like that. I have tried to keep a gospel separation of operational dollars and capital dollars, so that you're not subsidizing ongoing operational needs with one-time limited scope dollars, and vice versa, where we have high operational needs, I'd prefer not to see operational dollars get spent on the, the want of the day, whatever that might be, maybe it's Midwest Avenue, maybe it's a new park, who knows?
It's gonna be.
It won't be.
It's gonna be the park, not the.
I'm not.
It's gonna be my label. New grass, new grass if you want it.
So, so what I would ask you to do with respect to whatever recommendation council wants to forward, is that, that distinction is kept in mind, because that's lost on a lot of folks who are like, now wait a minute, we just spent, you know, six million dollars on, uh, the wastewater plant, what I could have gotten a raise. It really shouldn't be characterized in interchangeable ways like that, those types of dollars, or dollars in general. So, anyway.
So, good, thank you. So the point of that was, you would like to keep doing the funding the way you're doing it, keeping the operational dollars and the capital dollars and everything else, so that you're asking for direction to allow you to keep doing it the way you're doing it, is what I'm hearing?
Well, I, I guess, Mr. Mayor Protem, Councilman, what I'm suggesting is, the bevy of these recommendations and suggestions and homework assignments and so forth could very easily take us into a mixing of those dollars and/or. could very easily take us into a mixing of those dollars and/or philosophies that, in my estimation, makes it much more difficult to give you a balanced budget at the end of the day. And so I guess I'm saying that to say, now, regardless of what direction we go with this list of issues, please keep in mind that the thing that's helped us over the years, whether we've liked the budget priorities or not, is the fact that that segregation has been maintained over the years, and that really helps us to keep ahead of things.
Well, as a follow-up, I would certainly ask you, if we start to cross that line, to mention that so that we're
Fair enough.
aware of.
Fair enough.
Where we're at.
Thank you.
Because we certainly don't want you to have to cross into that either.
Pardon, did you have any ads on that list that you wanted to?
Oh, I do. I sure do. I sure do. Employees is a big one. If indeed you want to put more money towards streets, we can certainly bring you ideas that'll help you do that. I'm not sure how exactly to defund projects in order to make that happen. Because for me, that's the natural inclination. Going back to the point I just made with all of you, unless we're talking about reducing operational expenses to push into the streets capital, I'd be very uncomfortable. And so what that means is, if we are going to keep that segregation intact, we've got to defund other projects, be it water and sewer, the pipes that we were going to lay with 1 cent dollars, or money that we're going to set aside for the police chief in terms of trying to put forward that police building project, which, I mean, there's quite a bit there. The chief is dying, turning purple. I mean, I don't want that. I don't want that.
You're the one with your back to it.
He's licensed to kill, that's right.
Let's see, do you have aces and eights?
There's a lot of ways that that discussion can go to. And I want to meet your objectives, but I have to have you think about what projects you want to see sacrificed in order to make those kinds of projects happen. It's a priority gut check for everybody, right? And I want to be sure that you're comfortable that that is an option you want to consider.
So Carter, do you want us to come back Wednesday if we do want to see that? I know because that's what Kyle had said, that, you know, looking at that, would you want us to say, hey, or are you going to come back with us and say, look, these are the projects we would have to cut, or the things that we would have to do? Or is that, I mean, I guess, how are you, how do you want to move forward with the streets?
Thank you. That's a really good question. I guess what I would say, Mr. Mayor Protam, is what I would ask is that you go back and look at the capital agenda. You received that probably a couple of months ago now. See what it is that you think makes the most sense to defund in order to more appropriately fund streets. It's hard to disagree that streets should have more money. You'll get that from staff all day long, particularly Chad and Andrew. But whether or not you believe that it should be at the cost of doing pipe work or building work or other projects is really your call to make. And so I'd ask you to look at that and see what you think. And hopefully we can talk about that Wednesday night. Help?
Yep, thank you for clarifying.
You betcha, you betcha. We need to know what to do with health. We're at a, we're at a delta right now, about $25,000 with regard to what we funded and what council has suggested may be a target for us. That generally is an operational dollar issue. If indeed you do want to reduce hiring, I'd invite you to look at that portfolio and tell me what you think. I will help in that effort by providing you the list of those positions that we're trying to upgrade, reclassify and/or hire outright. And I'd love your feedback in that regard because without a doubt, there is money, you know, savings to be had with those proposals. I also heard, Councilman, you talked about selling assets and so forth. We can certainly bring some ideas forward Wednesday night if you prefer. As you and I kind of communicated via email, we're running out of assets that would be available in the short term. However, in the long term, I do think we have some options. The, the other challenge would be whether or not you view the revenue generated from those assets as being appropriate to offset operational dollars or other one-time project dollars, like streets, for example, or whatever.
I would like to point out, assets are also including parks.
Yes, they sure are. Thank you, Councilman.
So many emails coming from all of us.
Yeah.
These two.
Which would undoubtedly save operational dollars. There's no question. Maintaining less parks would save money right away, right away.
That'd be the number one hit list for your constituents, start taking their parks.
And so on them to private parks.
And some of the parks were paid for by private money. We're all built on the city.
True, also. Go ahead, Carter.
And then the other thing I heard from council was someone worked with two of the police departments, you know, immediate sort of, I don't want to call it crisis concerns, but higher level concerns that a police building stopgap could potentially be utilized. So we'll, we'll talk a little bit about that too and see if you can bring some ideas for Wednesday night.
So Carter kind of went over that list. Is there anything else that you want staff to look at before Wednesday? Anything to add to your list, Carter?
I, not that I'm aware of. If indeed you do want to see the budget reduced, certainly I'd like to know what you want that target to be and where you'd like to see that, whether that be capital or operations that would help drive a lot of conversation we need to have internally.
So I just had a question regarding the insurance. It, generally, insurance is just kind of, it is what it is. So how do we, I mean, it's going to be less than what you were originally paying, so the only thing that I can think of is for the insurance, possibly just charging those ones who are taking advantage of vision and dental, just charge them a small amount monthly to cover that. But other than that, I can't think that the insurance is really anything that we have control over, is it?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman, you are correct. One of the advantages that we gained in going to the state is we decentralized a lot of that decision-making to the board that the state kind of answers to, the legislature that actually makes those decisions, so that you wouldn't have to be burdened with what can often be a very political conversation about raising rates on employees. And so you're correct, you're correct. The only way we can is, you know, reduce that is if we had less people taking the benefit, and I don't see that happening, you know?
Bruce, thank you. I guess what I would like to see on Wednesday is, you know, you, your whole ideology was wrapped around bringing us a balanced budget, which you did a fantastic job of. I don't think it was ever in the mix to say, can we do, can we reduce that budget? You know what I mean? And so I guess I would want to know, instead of us giving you a figure, I'd like to see it reduced by 8 million or 15 million or whatever. And we still have services to provide. What I would like to know is, is it possible to reduce this budget, and if so, by how much, and still provide top-quality service to our people? That would be my question for you on Wednesday. I mean, you may be able to go back and say, you know, we can cut a little here, we can cut a little there, we can do this, we can do that. It just, and you're as fiscally responsible as I am. I just have such a hard time in such a pandemic time and our forecast increasing our budget. It's driving me insane. And so I'd like to know, is there opportunity to shrink that a little bit?
Mr. Mayor Protam, Councilman, if I could answer that to, in order to stimulate some thought with regard to that question, the question for me immediately becomes, are you looking at reducing the budget from an operational standpoint or from a capital standpoint? Because I would argue that the reason you're seeing a budget increase is largely because of the capital agenda that you're trying to perform. And I would tell you, you're only doing capital based on cash you've already collected. And so if the increase bothers you, you primarily have to point to the fact that you're trying to do more capital. And that's because last year, we had very, very little cash on hand to do any capital at all. So that's why I would suggest, the culprit behind that increase is not because employees are getting massive raises. Because I just showed you, the only aspect of that is really about $975,000. And when you're talking about a $147 million budget, $975,000 is not that much. So capital is your culprit, day in, day out. Your subsidies aren't increasing. Your expenses aren't going through the roof. Employees are 50% of your budget, and I just showed you where that increase is coming. If you want to reduce the budget, you got to tell me what capital you don't want to do. That's what it really, truly, fundamentally all boils down to.
Cameron, let all get used to.
Carter, maybe for homework then for Wednesday, to help us to just simplify that concept. Is it possible to say, like, here's the projects that are, that are making it look like the budget has inflated or this, between the year and last year? Like, it's these four things that we're doing, and that's primarily where it's coming from. So that we can, like, simplify it for ourselves and also for other folks who are tuning in.
Mr. Mayor Protam, Councilmember, just to give you a snapshot right now, right now that you can chew on. Last year, we spent $16.5 million in capital. Soup to nuts, 16.5. This year, we're proposing to spend, I'm looking to Evan and Pete.
Twenty-five.
How much?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight million.
And how much of that is just maintenance and taking care of what we have?
Mr. Mayor Protam, Councilman, that is the kind of data that we can break down because a lot of that you're going to see in the form of streets and water and sewer.
Because I know one of the things that I heard tonight is we're tired of just getting by and maintaining. So if most of that's going to maintain, it's going to be really hard to find a way to cut, right?
Amen.
So.
Steve, I have a question.
Sorry.
Oh, you're good.
No, you were going along the same thing. The big thing that I was going to point out, and Carter was doing that as well with his two numbers right there, is last year, in our 1% money, which was our capital money, we had collected $16 million, and we did not know how much more we were going to be able to accumulate. Therefore, we would have been strictly, if we would have had a $20 million budget last year, that from 16 to 20 would have been betting on the come. And we chose not to do that because we didn't want to try to commit to projects that we couldn't fund. Now, this year, we've got $28 million sitting there in cash. Therefore, we still are not betting on the come. And if we reduce that money, that 28 million is going to be sitting there because we just decided that we weren't going to mix capital and operation. So we either spend it right now at a reduced dollar figure, hopefully over what construction costs would be next year. So we are now spending the money we have available, if I have summed up where we are with the capital.
Oh, Mr. Mayor Protam, Councilman, absolutely. We spend the lion's share, the lion's share of our capital agenda on pavement and pipes, without a doubt. And, and we are not extending new water and sewer as a part of that, I promise you. It's all replacement. Every bit of it's replacement. It's because we're having busted water lines, because we're having sewer backups. It's because we've got potholes that swallows cars and pavement that sounds like a washboard, you know? It's not because we're building new, none of it, really. It's all we're maintaining, yeah, exactly.
Basically, any new roads, new sewer, new water are all being paid for in the subdivision developments. And the only thing that we actually pay is if we ask that subdivision to upsize either sewer or water. And then when it is extended on past that, that next subdivision picks up and pays for that upsizing. So we wind up recouping it. Unfortunately, it may not be next week. It may be, that's what happened in the 80s, 10 years down the road. But we do try to recoup that money for the upsizing, and all we pay for is the difference in that. If they would have put in a four inch and we asked for an eight inch, we're paying the difference in pipe price.
Fair enough.
And I'm making some of these statements for particularly the new people on council.
Well, to that point, I just wanted to thank you, City Manager, Councilman, everyone else that has this institutional knowledge. You've been learning a lot tonight. And I, you know, I suppose I could go look at the capital projects that we proposed and, you know, humor the $3 million in cuts that I'd love to see go to streets. But I imagine, good work of all y'all, it's not there. So I guess the, what I'm realizing tonight then is, I don't know. What mechanism, if any, do we have at the city level to get to a point where we're increasing those, you know, not deferring that maintenance? How do we reverse that course at a municipal level, if at all? Or does that require, you know, state legislature restructuring our taxes or something, you know? Is that outside of our control? Do we have any mechanism at the municipal level to change that, other than potentially, you know, like this special six cent, you know, special tax or something like that?
Mr. Mayor Protam, Councilman, another fair question that you all are offering tonight. One of the things that I didn't get to mention to you in the presentation that I'd like you to think about, and I do think would be consistent with your council goals, is looking at a stormwater enterprise. That, that's obviously a very complex conversation and not one that, you know, we say in 30 minutes, yeah, let's do it, kind of a thing. But that would be one feature that is relatively new for cities and towns to consider in order to deal with what I would consider is one of the largest unfunded assets that any city and town has to deal with.
Yeah, we haven't talked about that.
That's right, that's right. But you will in FY '22. You may say no, you may say yes, I don't know. The other side of it is, one cent really is, is our option. If we're not looking at one cent, we're looking at a six cent, kind of special purpose tax. And with that, we have to get the blessing of not only all the counties, cities and towns, but also all the county's residents as well to weigh in on the majority for that to happen. So it's not just a question for Casper residents. It's a question for Casper residents whether or not Midwest gets built from folks in Midwest, from folks in Mills, from folks who live on a ranch towards Lyssite, you know? They get to weigh in on whether or not Casper residents get to enjoy the creation of a Midwest street reconstruction. And that's it. That's it.
Good, Steve.
Thank you. I was going to say, and you brought it up as well, is that if the fifth cent passes in '22, next year, then we also get to decide how we distribute that money.
Yes.
Do we want to give an extra, do we want to cut back on this particular part that we've been funding and put more in the streets? But then that becomes a discussion as well. And you saw too, where we are allocating 10% to 20% of that money.
Nonprofits.
Yeah.
To nonprofits, and do we want to continue that? But these are, this all starts to play in the mix as well, is that how much do we keep funding those versus streets, sewer, fire, police, from that standpoint? So that's another allocation that hopefully, knock on wood, we will get to worry about in the spring of.
It did sound like what, Steve?
It sounds hollow, dude.
Very hollow.
Yeah.
Something just hit me. I think it came out of your ear.
Well, hang on, did you see it? Did you see my hand over here?
Yes, yes.
But, God, I love it. But that's another place that we will get a chance in the spring of '23 to sit down and look at how we want to allocate the funds that we wind up getting from that fifth cent.
Mr. Mayor Protam, Councilman Kathy, the other, the other question that unfortunately you're going to have to answer at some point in time, you know, hopefully after this budget series, is whether or not you want to restore any of the funds that your social, social service agencies lost as a result of the pandemic.
20%, yeah.
And the, and the decline in, in one cent funding, yeah. Because they did take a 20% haircut on the commitment that, you know, the council made to them. We need to know if and how you want to restore. We need to know if and how you want to restore that, if, if at all, you know?
Go ahead, Bruce.
Tough question.
We also have, I don't know if any of you have noticed lately in the paper, but the state's already starting their little manipulative ideology behind Wyoming tax and how Wyoming can afford to have more tax. I don't know if any of you have seen it, but it's been in the papers like crazy lately. Wyoming's the one state can afford to pay more tax, and it really wouldn't cost it. I think we're going to see a state, another penny thrown on by the state because they need the money so damn bad, and if marijuana doesn't get legalized or whatever to help bring in a revenue stream that they're looking for, you're going to see them put another penny on us, and then us trying to add a cent on top of that is going to be literally impossible for us. So, it's just going to get tougher and tougher for us, and I, I just hope everybody understands that, it's, it's, it's not going to get easier, at least for a while, so.
Can we put you on the record saying you want us to pass the tax before the state, then?
You know, I'm telling you, I'm as conservative as anybody, but I, I have no problem with a six cent tax. I, I like what it does for us, it helps our infrastructure, our roads, and if I could implore our, our citizens to do it, I would say by all means. It's, it's a penny, and it, it, it doesn't hit you real hard, you know? And I know what they're thinking, it's a tax, I understand, but they go away, just like the rest of them, but if the state puts that extra penny on it, that's not going away. So, I hope we can get it through before the state does that to us, because I think once that's in place, and it's coming, I think we're going to be really hard pressed to, yeah.
Well, I'd like to point out that I weathered this crew through the worst of it. Steve left.
But now you know.
We talked about the toughest stuff on the list.
It's not so tough on him. When he complains to you, you're like, it's so easy.
Just kidding. If there's any other questions, we'll have a regular meeting tomorrow?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Six o'clock.
Anything else you wanted to add?
I, I thank you very much. Thanks for the conversation, the dialogue. This is not an easy chore, it's a big chore, a big lift, but I really appreciate the, the collegiality and, and the pensiveness that all you bring to the table. Thank you very much.
I would like, I noticed they're all here, I would like to say thank you to all of the people sitting in this room for all of the work that you have done to get to this point. And we're not trying to nitpick or cut or, none of you are our enemies. We are trying to ask legitimate questions to figure out how to keep this city running, but I appreciate the time and the effort that every person sitting around here has put into this. It's, it is a difficult job, so I do appreciate it. Thank you all.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it. Thanks, have a good night, everybody.
Thanks, everybody. By exactly the amount of rate to check the salary.
That guy.
My real job or the?
This one.
We'll just redistribute it.
I like it.